Yes, so this afternoon we will be covering the multiple operational budgets for the Parks Department. The Director of the Parks Department, Mr. Ray Maurer, is here to present his operations budget, as well as he does have several CIP items. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Maurer.
Thank you, and thanks Council and Mr. Mayor. Been watching a little bit of the departments this morning and yesterday, and we'll try to keep it smoothly flowing for you. And if you have questions, obviously, we're going to be here to answer those. We'll go through the various divisions that are within my department. I do have my supervisory staff who will be joining me, so they'll be talking about some of the good things that they've done this past year, as well as what they're looking at for next year. We're going to start out with the Parks General Fund. Chad Dollman is on vacation in Canada this week, so we'll be taking care of the Parks Budget and a couple of other ones that Chad's been involved with. But the Parks Budget, at least some of the highlighted items from, this is on page 177 to talk about that we've accomplished or are finishing up. The Tech Miller Park restroom renovation, if the Council recalls, one of the major items that we heard in our comprehensive plan that we updated back in 2011 was citizens really wanted to see the restrooms updated throughout our facility, and the Council and the City Manager have been very supportive of trying to do one restroom at least a year. And what we do as far as the renovations, typically our staff will go in and demolish the interior, we use the building shell, and then we hire a contractor to come in and make it ADA accessible, more energy efficient, you know, sensors on lights, sensors on plumbing fixtures. So that's what we've been trying to do in this year was Tech Miller Park, and that project is, I believe, finishing up now. Within the last couple of weeks, we did playground, new playground installations at Sea Sand and Sailorland at Menominee Park and Fugelberg Park. The one at Sea Sand and Sailorland, we did work with the Neighborhood Association to do some fundraising for that, along with the Community Foundation. So that was a joint project, again, with Planning Division and some of the Healthy Neighborhood Initiatives that go through the budget. What we've started to do on all our new playgrounds is we're putting the pour-in-place rubber surfacing, similar to what we did at South Park at the Inclusive Playground. It's really a lot more accessible for individuals that might be in wheelchairs or walkers or grandparents to get out and be able to traverse the playground with their grandkids. It's a little more expensive on the front end, but it doesn't require us in the future to continually replace the wood mulch that gets typically kicked away from the swings and the slides. So hopefully in the next number of years, you're going to see our line item in our operating budget for that wood fiber going down because we're putting in this pour-in-place surfacing. And it's a lot safer, it's a lot more conducive if people fall off the equipment. The other large project we've been working jointly with Stormwater Management and Engineering is the South Park Lagoon Project. That project, obviously, is going on now and is anticipated to be completed early next spring into the summer. We're shooting for early part of June for that completion. One item that I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of is we've always had a memorial bench program. We've done a better job of promoting that, and this past year we installed five new benches. And what individuals can do, or service clubs, is it's a $1,500 donation to the department, and that pays for the bench, the concrete base that it goes on, and then we put a plaque on the bench, whether in memorial of somebody or, again, recognizing service clubs. So what we've done is tried to promote that a little bit more. A lot of those go into Menominee Park. You'll notice a number of those located along the shoreline, and it obviously helps us to stay out of our operating budget. Our guys will internally do that installation and the concrete work, so it's a win-win for individuals that would like to have some type of memorial. And then we are currently working on the construction and the award, or the bid was just awarded recently for the Mary Jewell Restroom Pump Station, and we'll be working with that project. Some objectives for next year, there's a number of items if we, when we get into the Capital Improvement Plan, some improvements at Fugelberg Park, that would be the restroom that we're proposing to renovate. South Park, again, working to enhance the project over there and the amenities in the park. The Great Neighborhood Projects, which have been recently approved by the Council, there's the Ball Diamond at Tech Miller Park that we'll be looking to reconstruct over there, some work at Stevens Park, and the Sawyer Creek Trail Rouge Park on the west side by Carl Traeger. We're currently working with Rettler Corporation to do a park master plan, working with the Neighborhood Association, as well as the Parks Board over there. So you're going to start to see that coming to fruition over the next couple of months. They're doing some mapping work over there.
Sorry, Ray, what did you say the Stevens Park piece was?
Stevens Park is, I believe, it's some smaller items, some tree identification signs, as well as, I believe, possibly some bollards on the path. There's been an issue with cars driving through the park on the pathway, so we're looking to try to deter that, but then also make sure that our staff can get through those areas. I think early on, earlier in the summer, I think Councilmember Paul Mary had asked about some of the budget issues that she wanted to be aware of coming forward, and I shared with all the Council that for us, being one of the departments that hire seasonal part-time people, one of the higher hiring people, it was very challenging this year. We've seen it the last couple of years, but this year was extremely challenging. One, because the unemployment rates are so low, but we're also seeing that our rates for our seasonal staff have lagged behind in some positions. When we're seeing people posting for, whether it's a fast food industry or cashiers at an Aldi or a Walmart getting paid $10, $12 an hour, and we're paying people $7 to $9 an hour, it's really been difficult. So what we're looking at in some of our budgets, pool, and some of the revenue facilities, is we're going to be working with HR and doing some surveys and possibly increasing our seasonal pay, potentially about a dollar an hour for some of those staff. Talking with Mr. Sturm, there's some staff that we have at the cemetery that have been returning, and we want to make sure if we have those staff and want to have them coming back, to make sure if it's a dollar an hour to keep them coming back versus having to hire new staff. So we'll be working with HR on that, and you'll see there's some, in our seasonal budgets, you're going to see that there's some increases proposed there. But that's really been our biggest challenge this year. And then, again, I noted in here on the parks, if you, individual line item landscaping supplies, that's mainly due to the wood fiber that's specifically manufactured to go under the playgrounds, and we have been working with the City Manager and the Council to try to get that increased every year because that's some way, an area that we haven't been doing such a good job, and we continually hear and see from people that we need to stay on top a little bit more of putting the wood mulch in the playgrounds.
Ray, just along those lines, someone had asked me recently, and I couldn't answer them, do we use mulch that comes out of the city brush chipper for that?
Not that, this, the mulch for under the playgrounds is actually, it's specifically manufactured over in the New London area because it has to be free of bark and nails and other shrapnel or other items that might come through the chipper at a city facility. So this is all clean, and it actually, it's a mulch that meshes together to almost make a matting after a period. So no, we can't use it in the playgrounds, but we do utilize some of that in some of our shrub beds and some other areas throughout the city.
Okay, thanks.
That really covers what I wanted to talk about on the Parks Budget. There were a couple of, a couple items that we did do, and one in particular, if you want to look at the Personnel Page, this past year we had an individual that transferred over from our depart, from the Water Distribution Department to the parks after we had a retirement, and this individual was one that came out on top of our candidate list, and he actually is a journeyman plumber. So we are utilizing this individual to do a lot more of our plumbing work, not only in our department, but we have offered him up to all the other departments through the city, so that I know this individual has helped out at the museum. He's helping out with John Urban and Terry Smith throughout City Hall, the Convention Center, and what we've done as part of that is we're actually contracting out less services. So we have worked with Trina and Mark to reduce some of our contracted services budget, along with some of the other departments, again, utilizing our staff across departments to get some of that plumbing done in-house. So we're working with this individual to obtain his Master Plumber License hopefully in the next couple of months, so he can take on some additional responsibilities doing those in-house for the various departments. And I think that's really been working out great for us, and an area that I think we need to continue to grow on sharing our staff. So I wanted to make sure and highlight that item for you.
Oh, sorry. On the seasonal help, 6103. So it looks like that's only estimated to go up $100. How is that going to cover, would you reduce the number and go up higher on the hourly, or?
Yes, that is correct. In this area, because if you recall, last year we, through the budget process, added one full-time position by reducing some of those numbers, we would try to keep that number consistent or slightly less by adding, potentially increasing their salary in this area. And as I said, once we get into some of the other budgets where we couldn't do that, you're going to see that there's going to be an increase in that seasonal budget.
Are there any other questions? The parks does have a number of VIP projects that we could step into next, then. Those items start on page 26.
Okay, just prior to us kicking off this afternoon, I did share with you the Advisory Parks Board Prioritize List. That is something the Parks Board does annually, so you'll have that in front of you. And what we try to do is take a look at all our projects that are incorporated, our comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, as well as our individual park plans for Menominee Park, South Park, and Rainbow Park. We try to tackle some of the high priority projects. Some of those projects may get shifted around due to maybe user groups helping to fund a project or available grant funding, so we take a look at a number of items. I'm on page 26, as Trina had said. One of the top projects for us at this point is renovating the Menominee Park tennis courts. We have met with a number of the tennis court users, along with the Neighborhood Association, and they are very supportive of this project, and the courts are in need of replacement. We've also talked with, and you've probably heard, that pickleball is one of the big and upcoming and very popular now. What we're doing is possibly working at reducing the number of tennis courts and incorporating some pickleball courts. I've had a meeting with representatives from the local pickleball group, as well as the tennis players, and they all feel that doing so would alleviate some of the concerns they're having with space. So we're working on a current design that would incorporate some pickleball courts there.
Can I just ask a dumb question here? What's the difference between the tennis court and the pickleball court?
The size of the court, the height of the net. The pickleball courts, we're looking at having some fencing to keep it a little more contained, some of the lower-level fencing, and that'll take, you'll take a look at Rainbow Park, they've done that kind of internally in their small group, but really it's the court size and the height of the tennis, or the net itself. You can, you can stripe courts so that they're multi-use, but in talking with the user groups, it becomes an issue with them, and if there's potential grant funding out there through, whether a tennis association, a National Tennis Association, or a pickleball, they do not typically fund projects where you're using multi-sport striping. So that's another reason why we are separating them out as well.
Okay, so that kind of leads me to another question along those lines. Someone had called earlier this week about the skateboard park and whether or not, I guess, because currently it's no scooters allowed, and I guess relating to changing in trends in multi-use space, the question became, you know, well, why are the scooters not allowed? Because apparently that's a new trend with older kids or something, and I, and I guess I asked that question because are we, with Rettler, leaning more towards doing where we can multi-use equipment and spaces?
Yeah, and we're actually doing that with not only the tennis courts pickleball, but with our youth and our adult softball and baseball fields. What we're now doing is making the infield, the outside arc of the infield, larger so that we can have multiple base lengths from 55 up to 90-foot base lengths, so that you can put various, various age groups and abilities on those. So yes, to address your question, a lot of those areas are being made more multi-use for us. Moving down the list, we have Spanbow or Field Improvements, and this is one that we really haven't made some major improvements into some of our fields that are used by the adult sports. I do have a letter from Al Wenning from the Rec Department and the Softball Commission supporting this project. They have not committed funding, but I said that we would be looking. If you take a look, the entire project, we're looking at about $250,000, and we're hoping to raise about $50,000 of that amount. My anticipation is that we'll be reaching out to the Softball Commission, as well as some of the other user groups, to help with some of that fundraising. And this is a field that was the primary field in the past for the adult sports. Right now, it's primarily used by the women's softball, co-ed softball, and the Rec Department then offers kickball in the fall, but a lot of the youth sports also take place here throughout the week, so it's a heavily-used diamond, but it is in need of some repairs, the fencing, as well as the infield and some other areas. Next item is South Park, the play equipment and surfacing. This would be the existing older structure that is between the restroom facility and the new Inclusive Playground. When this came up at the Parks Board, this wasn't as high on my list, but then the Parks Board member said with the improvements we're making to South Park with the lagoons, as well as the new restroom, it'd be really nice to keep working on South Park and get this project completed, so that we're really focusing on getting a number of items done at South Park. The next item is the Fugelberg Boat Launch, the Restrooms Update. These, a number of these Fugelberg projects, you're going to see some grant funding there, and through the Planning Division and Economic Development, they had received a grant a couple of years back from the DNR for some recreational boating facilities. And if you recall, when the Boat Works project was going on, there was discussion of a possible boat launch in that site, and it was determined that because of the depth of the water and the amount of dredging that would take place, that that became financially unfeasible. So Darlene Brant in Planning has worked with the DNR, and as long as we're able to utilize that grant funding at other boating facilities, the DNR was willing to let us change the scope for that dollar amount, and it's about $225,000 in grant funding that they have committed to these projects. So I worked with Darlene, and so when you see a state grant, that money is actually coming from a grant that has already been committed to Oshkosh boating facilities. So at the Fugelberg Restrooms, we would intend to use a portion of that to renovate the restroom facility. Moving on down, there's, it's always been a plan of the cities to add another boat ramp to the Fugelberg Boat Launch for some of the larger boats. If you've launched there, there's a breakwater that really limits the size of the boats that can go in and out of that ramp, so we would look at adding a ramp that would possibly allow some of the additional, the larger boats, and we'll be reaching out to some of the, some of the fishing clubs, as well as some of the other user groups to possibly help fund some of the donation along with that grant opportunity. And then the final item on page 27 is to update the lighting at the boat launch. Again, annually, we've been requesting a park that we can update the lighting. We work with Mr. Kussman and the Electric Division to switch these over to LED lights and the consistent lights that we've been using throughout the parks. So as long as we had this grant funding available, we felt that utilizing at the boat launch this year would be the appropriate site to utilize those funds at.
Are we using any of the boat launch revenue fees in any of these?
At this point, I'm going to have to look back because I need to look where Trina is.
Because those fees can be specifically used at boat launches and in improvements, correct?
Yep, we are not for these, but when we get into the, our park facilities revenue budget, we're going to be talking about some electronic pay stations, and there is where we're looking to transfer some of the dollars from the boat launch fund and start utilizing those for those pay stations. So these capital items on this page, we are not tapping the boat launch fund at this point.
With regard to the restrooms at Menominee Park, the beach house more specifically, is that something in the other fund that you're just referring to, or is that anywhere in our CIP?
The restrooms where, I'm sorry?
Restrooms at the beach, well, the beach house slash restrooms at Menominee Beach?
Yeah, that.
Where is that falling?
That would be in our operation budget because it is not high on the list at this point in the CIP list, or in the Menominee Park plan. But that is something, I know there's some improvements we need to do down at the bathhouse restrooms, and we'll take care of that in-house in our operation budget.
Okay.
The final item will be on page 30 at this point for projects, which is the renovation of the Riverwalk, which is adjacent to the Leech Amphitheater. This project is necessary because it's really become a trip hazard back there. When the, this Riverwalk was installed in the early 2000s, there's the sea wall, which is a containment area basically for the soils on the site, and we cannot do anything with that sea wall without having WPS's permission, because we don't want to disrupt the integrity of that wall and allow any contaminated soil to get into the river. When this sea, or when the Riverwalk was put into place, the concrete walkway was not attached or secured to the sea wall, and what's happening is it's being undercut from all the water coming off the hillside behind the leech, so it's actually, the Riverwalk has sunk down. There's areas that are anywhere from three to four inches where it's sunk and becomes a trip hazard. So we've worked initially right now with AECOM, as well as WPS, to come up with an initial design where we would go in and remove that section of the Riverwalk concrete, come back in, reinforce the base, and then what we would do is put a brace on the back of the sea wall where the concrete walkway would actually attach to the sea wall, so this would not happen in the future. It's the same design that they've been using in other areas of the Riverwalk where there is a sea wall. Essentially, there's an L bracket that goes on to the back of the sea wall that the concrete sits on, so it doesn't shift if the base course starts to erode. Some good news on this, you can see we're anticipating a state grant of $92,000. Ann Schaefer, who's our marketing and fund developer, wrote two grants. We recently received notification that we were successful in receiving $45,000 at this point, and the other one was for a stewardship grant through the DNR, and they could not commit funds to any project until the state budget was signed, which recently happened, so we're hoping that the remainder of that, the $47,000 roughly, may come from the stewardship grant. So we would have approximately 50% of this project funded through grant, through the, through the DNR at this point.
I had a question on the tennis court reconstruction. In the CIP book, it says the project totals $300,000, but on your request summary, it's $420,000?
Yes, what we did through the CIP process and after meeting with the tennis and pickleball players, the 420 included adding new lights at the courts. Talking with the groups, they really felt that at this point, they really need to get the tennis courts in, and as we met through the CIP process, we reduced the scope of the project. We'll probably put all the conduit in for the lighting in the future, and then in some future budget year, we may come back and add the $120,000 to $130,000 for the lights. Do you want to go right into equipment right away, as long as we're here?
Perfect.
I'm going to have Bill help on this one because he has met with Chad on.
Ray, a question.
Yes.
This morning, Suter was talking about some lighting stuff down at the Riverwalk, and a question came up about the condition of the lights and everything, and it was, Suter felt the bigger problem wasn't vandalism, but people using the bollards as.
Tie-ups.
Boat tie-ups. Should, I think the question came up, and I, because I jotted it down, was, we need any additional ordinance or regulation that gives you some enforcement or gives police enforcement ability? We forgot to ask Chief when he was in about.
Or signage that, you know, basically says do not tie up to the lights or something?
We, we've worked with the local boat club, and they will actually put signage out there during some of the large, the Waterfest events. We have a staff member on at the Leech that we have now instructed to go up and down the Riverwalk, and if they see people tying off, to ask them to remove it. And again, back to the boat club, they typically have a couple of their boats down there, and they are actually doing patrolling for us on those busy nights as well. We have had some temporary signs put up, but it's an area where it's difficult to put permanent signs up down there saying do not tie up. Back to the question about an ordinance, we do have an ordinance on the books ready that if they damage city property or park property, that they can be cited for that. I'm hoping that by having our staff members go up and down the Riverwalk during those large events and during our Tuesday night concerts, that will help out. But yes, it is a problem, and those lights, those bollards are $1,300 to $1,500 a piece, I believe, so they're very expensive.
So you think it's enough if they are told you got to tie up somewhere?
I think so. We can look at alternatives of putting some signs somewhere. A lot of the times signage is not the answer, but we can.
Write them a ticket.
Yeah, and we do have, we do have.
Because sometimes the people you have enforcing that are young kids, and they might just say, you know.
But we do have the police, we do have the police on site for all those events as well, so if it gets to that point, we could bring an officer in. We can take a look at it, but I think we currently do have the ordinance in effect that if it's, something's damaged, we can go back after the, those individuals.
Okay.
Page 38 is the major equipment. We have a step van, and I don't know, Bill, hopefully you're going to have more information, but essentially this replaces one of our existing vehicles. For, our step vans are essentially the large utility vans that our trades techs will take out onto a project site. They're loaded with their tools and equipment that they need so that there's not a need for coming back and forth to the shop. This is replacing our existing truck, number 425. And then the other one is a zero-turn mower with seasonal attachments. What we have done is, these are pretty much all-season vehicles. There are zero-turn mowers for mowing during the mowing season, and then we can transform those into snow blower units. They're essentially, are called polar tracks. We put tracks on for snow removal during the winter months. So we're replacing one of those with a number of older pieces of equipment you can see that we're getting rid of. If there's any specific questions on those, those, and we provide Trina and Mark with, you know, the ongoing maintenance costs that we've seen over the last couple of years, as well as years, and because these are multi-season pieces of equipment as well.
And the ones you're replacing, those are getting traded in, that's reducing the cost, or are they getting reused or sold?
Yeah, these will typically get traded in.
For the zero-turn tractor, we're actually trading in three older units and replacing it with one. That's a multipurpose piece of equipment, and the step van has had, you know, quite extensive repairs that have been needed over the past three years, so it's, we have to pay for that through our operations budget, so we're trying to alleviate some of those future repairs by replacing the vehicle.
Okay.
So that would wrap the capital improvement projects for the Parks Department. So then we would be at page 182 to lead off with the Forestry Division.
I'm going to turn it over to Bill, and he can talk about some of the accomplishments and objectives coming up.
Okay, thank you. We've had a pretty exciting year this year. We started off, we received a $25,000 Wisconsin DNR Urban Forestry Grant, which allowed us to do multiple things. The emphasis was on diversification of our tree canopy, because as many of you know, with, you know, the danger to our ash trees, we wanted to make sure that we had multiple species out there in the area. So we, we were actually able to work with Planning and partnered with the Neighborhood Associations, and we did planting that was quite extensive. And then we also, through that grant, also did four workshops that were designed mainly for the general public to give them information regarding tree care. So that was conducted by a certified arborist that we had under contract to assist us with that, and those went over quite well. They were well-attended. Through that program, we also offered trees to folks on private property because we also have an interest in making sure that people are remembering to plant on their own properties aside from what we do in the city. The other piece of that grant was also that we had some extra dollars to work on Emerald Dashboard mitigation and treatment. So we normally try to treat about 300 trees a year, so this grant allowed us to treat some additional trees that we thought were worth saving. So we actually treated over 570 trees this summer, so the treatment that we use is actually good for three years, so this buys us, you know, some time. We're still removing some of the ash trees that are in poor condition or are associated with sidewalk work or curb or infrastructure problems, so we have removed some of them that were problematic anyway, but the bulk of them, we're trying to save as best we can through the treatment scenario, which is working quite well. The other accomplishments we have done this year is we updated chapter 26 of the Municipal Code, which covers forestry issues, and I think most of you are aware of that. We also do a lot of the landscaping on city properties, so a couple of projects that we had been working on with Planning and the Neighborhood Associations include the completion of these Chief Oshkosh Monument Landscape Restoration and Improvements. So through that project, we put in some sidewalks to create some accessibility to the monument, and then we also did some plantings around that area and some restoration. And then we also did some plantings around that area and some restoration of some of the lawn areas. The previous winter, we had also removed a few of the, uh, trees that were causing obstruction to visibility of that statue that were in poor condition. So we did remove a few trees for that too that were in, in poorer shape anyway. We, uh, we have a complete inventory of all of our street trees on the GIS. And so, uh, through that mapping, uh, system, we were able to create, uh, tree pruning mapping zones. So this enables our crews to better, uh, manage the, the routine maintenance that goes on with the street trees. So we established, uh, uh, zones that, uh, they will be working on in, uh, each year for the next consecutive five-year cycle. So, uh, you know, we have a lot of trees that were added through the course of the taking root projects and other neighborhood improvement, uh, tree planting. So, uh, now we have a little, uh, we're a little more capable of, uh, addressing each individual tree in some of these areas, uh, through our pruning and maintenance cycle. So we've also, uh, been doing a lot of replacement through our, with our own staff of trees that were taken out. So that's, um, that program has been well-received by the, uh, the folks in the community. So as we remove trees, we like to replace them. And, uh, so with that, uh, we've also added some into some other areas that, uh, that were outside of some of the neighborhood areas that we've been working with, uh, primarily. We've also, um, got a couple of grants, um, for tree planting. Uh, one of them is, uh, through a partnership with American Transmission Company, who is one of our utility companies here in this, this community. And they have partnered with the Bucks. And so, uh, they have a program with the Bucks currently that, uh, every time, uh, they shoot a three-point play, Oshkosh gets a tree. So, um, we're fortunate to have developed that partnership here in Oshkosh, uh, given that we have the, um, Wisconsin herd now in our community. Uh, we've, uh, worked with ATC and trying to develop some projects that would be in the vicinity of the, uh, the sports complex. So, uh, that's all been good news. We've also done several other landscape improvements too, which I forgot to mention earlier, which would include, uh, the convention center. We did some rehab down there. And then we've also, or I have also been working extensively with the curb appeal project with the, uh, Oshkosh More Education Program, which was, uh, kind of a big undertaking but well-received. Uh, we did, uh, do quite a bit of tree planting on public property associated with some of the schools. And then, uh, we were also, uh, very closely involved in some of the planning of, of the landscape improvements on all of the school sites that were worked on during that, that project.
Overall, you would say that our forestry throughout the city is in pretty good shape?
Yes.
On city-owned property mostly I'm talking about?
Yeah, um, we've, uh, as I said, you know, been doing a lot of replanting. Um, you know, we've, we're still kind of fighting the deficit from, you know, that two thousand and one storm that we lost, you know, a lot of trees in the community. So I think through, you know, a lot of this public-private partnership, we've been able to, you know, fill in these trees, which was really not possible through our normal operational budget, so...
Now, South Park, they took down a bunch of trees. Are we putting them back in or is that part of the plan at South Park? To have whoever's doing the work plant the new trees?
Um, what we did was, any trees that were removed were, um, either willows or mainly were willows and ash trees that were going to be removed. A number of the memorial trees, Bill worked with the contractors to relocate those. Um, but we are going to be looking to replace some of the trees as part of our, um, we have a nursery inventory as well as some of our planting budget as well.
Okay.
I just wanted to, um, um, you know, Steve, you asked about the condition of the trees. I think, um, one thing that Bill hasn't talked about is, um, the forestry unit has four full-time staff. And, um, not only are responsible for, um, the city terrace trees throughout the city, but as Bill said, a lot of the, um, public facilities and buildings, uh, his staff gets involved with designing and maintaining shrub beds throughout the parks, throughout city facilities, um, the roundabouts, the median plantings. Um, all of those, um, Bill tries to handle with his four staff members. Um, one thing that we developed, as Bill said, is this new, uh, mapping for the, the city. Um, I think in the past, we've been a little too reactive. If somebody called in with a tree complaint about needing trimming, um, I think we're reacting instead of being proactive. And by having a, a pruning map now, we can show them which area of the city we're concentrating on each year. Um, if it's not a, a nuisance tree that has to be trimmed right away, we can let the citizen know, you know, it's planned for trimming next year. Um, but Bill makes that determination if it's something that needs to be addressed. Uh, but what we're also doing, Bill and Chad are working, um, more on pooling our employees, even though we have employees in forestry, parks, cemetery. Um, we are looking at utilizing staff throughout all divisions. We've been doing that, but we're moving more and more towards, um, really focusing on what needs to be done in the city. So over the mid, winter months, um, the forestry crew is typically trimming trees. Four guys, you typically have one, possibly two small crews. Um, if it's not a snowy winter where our parks guys are being plowing or doing other events, we're now going to be having more guys from parks and cemetery doing tree trimming to try to get caught up. So it's, um, something that Bill and Chad will be transforming to a little bit more.
Okay, good.
Um, Ray, uh, then would that also be, uh, the public safety building on the Jackson Street side also be in the forestry's, um, purview? Or where's that?
Uh, facilities maintenance here at City Hall takes most of the maintenance responsibility for that. We, when we have time, um, you know, we do assist with some of the renovations of some of those landscape beds. Um, you know, we try to develop them so that they're more maintenance-friendly. We do the tree trimming and that sort of thing adjacent to the building. You know, that's, that's kind of a big area and we'd hope to kind of get involved in that. But with, we're spread pretty thin with, uh, our small crew and all the things that we're taking on, so...
So if there were a couple of neighborhood, um, associations in the vicinity that could coordinate something through your office to help with some of that? That's more of a fall project, like those tree, uh, or bush pruning type things in the Jackson Street area?
Sure, yeah, um, you know, we would be open to partnering with neighborhood associations, of course, if there's interest in, you know, folks coming out to assist in some of those projects.
Just seems like we've got some invasive stuff, like my high, like they probably were a little seedling, but now they're getting a little wacky over there.
It, it was an area, I know that, um, it was an area that Bill had been asked to help them on this year, but because of some of the other projects, um, the convention center being one and Chief Oshkosh, he wasn't able to, to get to. Um, so if it is something they need help with, um, we do as, as much as we can and maybe it's something we can help on extra. But definitely if there's neighborhood associations, uh, we would work with them. We work with, um, River East. They assist us down on the riverwalk. They help us with maintaining the flower plots, the flower plots, pots down there, um, collecting garbage throughout the summer. So there's many ways we can work with them. There's been talk from other groups about trying to get volunteers to do the roundabout plantings. Um, we would not be comfortable and our risk manager is not comfortable with that. Um, it's, it's very unsafe for our staff, even being out there with a, a vehicle with a beacon on. Um, we do have a regular maintenance plan for the roundabouts. Uh, Bill has a, a maintenance plan set up that his staff go in there at least once a month on a set day to try to clean up garbage and other things, and they'll do so as, as, as they can. But again, because they're stretched so far and depending what the park staff are doing, it's, it's one of those that we get to as we can, so...
One quick thing about the Chief Oshkosh Monument in Menominee Park. You know, I raised the five thousand dollars from a donor to do a bigger sign. And we're having a, have been having a heck of a time getting someone to write the, the copy. We've been working with the Menominee Nation at Kishina. And I finally have someone from the university who's part of that nation who is now lighting a fire under their historian to get us the copy. So hopefully that can be done next year.
Yep, we, we've been in touch with Alexa from planning and I know she's been part of that. And we've got, um, I think there's a bench that we're waiting to get installed yet. So the bench and the sign are the final two pieces of items, so...
Yeah, we're hoping to install both the bench and the sign, you know, at the same time so that it kind of is all under concrete and...
We wanted the copy in their words, not our words.
Sure.
Delay.
Okay, with no further questions, we'll move on to the Senior Center Revolving Fund, page one eighty-five. So this is a smaller fund that has association, uh, with the larger fund of the senior services.
I'm gonna have, um, Jean Wolerman come forward. Um, one of the accomplishments for us this year was, um, to hire a new senior center manager. And Jean joined us back in February, March, I'm guessing, January. And she's been doing a great job for us. And, um, I'm gonna let her touch on a couple of things that, as far as accomplishments. Um, but Jean is, um, her background is from the YMCA and, um, older, older adult programming. Um, so she's gonna talk about some ways that we're looking to expand the fitness offerings at the senior center and, um, helping with more of that aging population coming in. But, um, as Trina said, the, the two oh one account is really, it's a, what we consider our programming account. It allows us to try new programs and help some other programs maybe offset the cost of others. It's really, um, a revolving, a fund for us. Um, it gives Jean and her staff some flexibility on, on trying new items. Um, so this is almost a, a money in, money out, but you can see that there is a fund balance that has been growing. Um, so Jean is looking to spend, um, a little bit of that fund balance. If you look under the budget variances, um, there is some, um, woodshop equipment that she has worked with the woodshop gentlemen to, uh, to come together and they'd like to purchase. Uh, there was a donation, I believe, that offsets that cost as well. Um, looking for a better projector television for the Campbell Creek Room, um, for the meetings that are held there as well as for trainings and other programs. But, um, Jean, maybe you can go through some of the insignificant accomplishments and talk about the fitness items as well. And then the, the new fees, I did hand out your fee structure.
Okay. I guess I'll just start with some of the accomplishments that we've been doing so far. Um, when I came in January, there was a flooring project that was starting. So all of the south building and the, um, offices in the, uh, in the north building where, uh, new carpet was placed and also some of the painting that was done also. And some new heating and cooling units were being replaced during that timeframe. Uh, the Committee on Aging moved out of the senior center and is now under the city. So the Committee on Aging has been meeting here. They went through a strategic plan, which has kind of guided them into the future, which has been a wonderful feat for them. Um, we've also, uh, we're starting to get our fitness staff a little more certified in different classes and different off, so that we can get them into, uh, new classes starting in the two thousand and eighteen year. And then with Ann's help, we've been doing a lot of, um, writing, grant writing and getting some more sponsorships and grants, uh, going into the senior center.
So right now for that fund, um, there's just an estimated four thousand for next year in grants? Is that right?
In that, yes. And also in that fund, we're also looking, when we move into more of the fitness changes, um, we're also looking to add more fitness equipment that will, um, not replace, but add some new strength training pieces of equipment because there's a line of equipment that, um, I've had seniors work on for years and years through the, the Y system that is a really, uh, user-friendly type of strength equipment. It's a series that, we have four pieces so far that we purchased this year and looking to add another four for next year in a total of an, of an eleven, uh, strength training series. So with that, should I just go into the fitness area?
Yeah, why don't, um, I guess, I just want to step back and, and remind the council that, um, this past year Fox Valley Technical College, um, did not renew their lease with us. They had been offering a number of programs there. And then as part of their, um, uh, direction from the state, um, they were asked to increase the fee for some of their programs. And they found that it just was not going to be well-attended. So they, um, did not renew their lease with us. So we lost about ten thousand dollars.
Fifteen.
Fifteen thousand dollars in rental revenue. Um, so again, going back to what Jean has been working with Ann on is reaching out to other businesses as far as sponsoring programs, um, coming into the senior center to, um, talk about whether it's a, a local hospital or a local, um, business that the seniors can benefit from. Um, so they're really trying to close that gap. But you can also see in the tax levy, um, we are requesting additional tax levy to help offset some of that loss. Um, but then what Jean is looking to do in the, um, the Campbell Room, which is in the, the north building where Fox Valley Tech really used a lot of that room, is we're gonna work internally to make that more of an expanded fitness area. So if you want to talk about that, then you could go through your fees maybe as well.
Okay, so in combination with the fee change that we have to do through the, um, on the ba, on the backside for the exercise in the Fox Fitness area, um, we had the opportunity, um, you know, well, in two thousand and sixteen, the center had contracted through, um, Triviti Health, which is a, uh, they, they have, um, a fitness benefit for people on a Medicare, which is called Silver Sneakers. The, that contract could only allow participants to participate either in a exercise or, um, or the Fox Fitness Center. And in order for us to offer classes and trainings through Silver Sneaker program, you had to actually, um, make your fee a one, one fee for people when they came into the facility. Very similar to a lot of private places in the YMCA's. Yeah, also, we had the opportunity this year to sign on to two other, um, organizations that offer fitness benefits for Medicare recipients. And in order to do that too, we had to have one fee that, um, was attached to the individuals as they, um, were able to participate in the fitness programs. So with that, we needed to consolidate what was currently offered in our fees as two separate fees into one fee. So as you can see, that is proposed for two thousand and eighteen. Um, we already contracted through the three entities to offer the fitness benefits. So a lot of insurances for Medicare recipients. Um, for example, uh, Network Health, United Healthcare, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Humana. Um, all of them offer some form of, um, health benefit, a fitness benefit. And because they can, um, be a part of three of these different organizations, you have to sign on to contract all three of them. So, um, so that's why we, it's kind of cumbersome a little bit, but...
Um, so Jean, uh, my question is, so it looks like there's starting to be some possible, like, overlap. And with your experience with the YMCA, um, are you seeing some of the folks that is, are, as we expand fitness at the senior center, are we now then competing with the Y for some of the same people?
Um, I think it's a complementary because of the fact that we need to be competitive with them. Um, we were losing participants because of their health insurances. So if we didn't sign on to these contracted services, then they would have gone and they would stay there. So for us to provide and give options to individuals, then we also had to be a part of these, um, insurance reimbursement programs too, so... I say that, um, in my eyes, it's, it's a complementary thing because we tell the individuals, you know, the best thing for you is if you want to come and work out at the senior center, but also go to the Y and use their swimming pool. Or go to, if you wanted to, uh, take a class at another facility. I think if we all work together, it's a complementary thing. It's not, I don't look at, at it as a competition.
Can you explain to, to the council how the, how this works through the insurance program? And so what this, the citizen may pay for the program, but they get reimbursed or how does that work?
Um, what it is, is that if you are on a Medicare, um, insurance plan that offers this fitness benefit, it is no charge to you. But through each contract, we get reimbursed per visit. And there's a maximum per visit that we would just get reimbursed for, but individuals can come and work out as many times as they want. So I'll give you an example. Um, we signed on with a company called American Specialty Health. The, um, fitness reimbursement program is called Silver and Fit. It goes with insurances that have, um, AA or, uh, at now, Blue Cross, Blue Shield and WPS, which is Wisconsin Physicians Services. And that reimbursement for us is a three-dollar visit, up to ten visits. So a max we could get per month is thirty dollars per month from, from that insurance. So we submit their, their visits at the end of every month and then we get a check back. So currently, right now, through our Silver Sneakers, we will probably get about twenty... So currently, right now, through our Silver Sneakers, we will probably get about $20,000 at the end of the year reimbursed from that Silver Sneaker plan back into the center from the visits that the participants were participating in. And one thing that the Silver Sneaker program, anyone that had United Healthcare, United Healthcare backed out of the Silver Sneaker program and then signed on with a company called Healthy Contributions, which is a Optum Fitness Advantage, so we would've lost approximately 50 individuals that were a part of Silver Sneakers, that if we didn't sign on with the Optum, they would've probably left us and maybe worked out at another facility that had offered the Optum Fitness Advantage, which the YMCA is another entity signed on also, so.
And I think back to your question, Councilmember Palmer, is Jean and her staff are having conversations with the YMCA on other collaborative opportunities. Jean is also on Evergreen's board as the leadership adjunct board member, and she's already had some conversations with them on some possibilities, as well as talking with some of the local hospitals when individuals go in for a surgery or a procedure and they have limited physical therapy at the hospital, to have them come to the senior center and maybe it's getting on our equipment and doing some physical therapy or walking on the River Walk and using our facility, so they've had those types of conversations for collaborations as well, so.
How many yearly rate members do you have?
Currently, right now, we have about 869, we just got that number, that are active in the Fox Fitness Center, in our fitness classes, and also in our wellness offerings. So we're looking to obviously increase. For example, the, there are 1,500 people in our area, because we had asked for our zip code area, who could be eligible for the Silver and Fit program, and that will start up in, on December 1st. Currently with the Optum, we have about 590 additional people that have the O2 zip code that could be eligible for the Optum. So we get stats from these companies to let us know in our, in our area, what, who could be eligible to join us in these programs. They also are eligible to go to other entities too, so like I said, if they sign up through us and sign up through the Y, it's actually a benefit for everybody and it's a benefit for insurance companies.
Or any of the Silver Sneakers under that Medicare umbrella, they can have multiple memberships and...
Correct, correct. It's only that, whatever entity, they get one visit per day, wherever they go, so. So in order, again, in order for us to continue moving towards a few things with the fitness program is going with a one fee. It eliminates many things that are occurring now at the north facility. It's very hard for staff and individuals to really realize, when you walk in the door, who's going to classes and who's just going to the Fox Fitness Center. It's not really an ideal setup as well as our future, what does it look like when we go, if we open up the building at nighttime or on weekends? It allows us to just let them scan in and go and do whatever they wanna do. And then if we offer classes or a wellness workshop or a seminar, we're not worrying about, okay, did you attend, you know, with the, with the old structure, it became very cumbersome for our, for our staff.
Just out of curiosity, can you remind me, does the senior center offer any kind of shuttle transportation, or is that, is that not part of our programming?
The Go Transit comes right to our facility, drops off individuals?
We don't have any kind of shuttle.
We don't know, no. They can use dial-a-ride, there's a lot of transportation things in the community that they can use.
But some of like, is it Evergreen or Bella Vista, they do some of that?
That's correct. We do, we do work with Go Transit for individuals that come to the senior center. We do reimburse Go Transit for those bus rides, so that is part of the senior center budget. I'm gonna keep going, but one other item, if you take a look at the fee, the proposed fees for 2018 and look on the opposite side of the fitness information, you're gonna see some of the program and just drop-in fees. You're gonna see that we are proposing going up slightly in some of those areas. One of the main reasons is, if you recall, the Department of Revenue came in recently and looked at all city departments. There were some areas at the senior center where we were not properly paying taxes, so the fees haven't been increased in a while, plus we're looking at now including, the taxes included in that fee to help with that issue, so we wanted to make sure you're aware of that too. And I made a note here, I need to make sure that the council is aware that the Friends of the Senior Center continues to be a strong supporter of the senior center. Their Food Truck Fridays were very successful this year, they're looking at at least three of them again next year, but I believe this year, Jean, correct me if I'm wrong, they are contributing $50,000 towards the operation, and Jean has submitted a proposal next year to take that up just slightly to 51,300. So they are definitely been very active. I think they've upped their game in their fundraising, and Jean and her staff have worked very closely with them to make sure that they are successful, so I wanted to make sure that you're aware of that.
Is that included in the revenue miscellaneous? Is that where that reflects, or is that?
That's gonna be actually in the 231 budget. There's two separate budgets for the senior center, so we're on the 201, and my guess is the 231 is gonna be the next couple pages.
231 is the general operations.
So if you take a look at page 189, the 231 account, that is the general operations or where the general fund supports the operations of the senior center. So if you look there, where's it gonna be?
Yeah, it's under the miscellaneous revenue.
Right, that's what I was asking.
Yes, it is.
It is in the miscellaneous, okay, so about $50,000 of that, you say?
This next year, 2018, we're looking at 51,300. In 2017, it was 50,000.
And the levy went up to support the senior center too, correct? A little bit?
Yes, this year.
The big bump was last year, when it went up because of the loss of the Fox Valley Tech, so there's a more modest this year.
Lutheran Social Services also last year.
Yeah, both of them, yes.
You guys maybe wanna discuss at all the potential of a name change with the council?
Yes, that is, that's one that's been discussed on and off for a number of years. It is still on our radar with other things going on. We have Walter hired to do our strategic plan for our entire Parks Department, which the senior center is part of. We have him under contract and we're looking to start that yet this fall, and part of that we'll be having that discussion with the senior center, the Friends, as well as the senior center board. Committee on Aging will probably have a little discussion as well, so.
Mr. Walter Jankowski?
Walter Jankowski, yes, I'm sorry.
Is there been any discussion at all, maybe one or two nights a week, could be an open later?
With Jean starting this year, she had a long list of items that I had on her goal list. Her goal for next year is to be evaluating, because we are expanding the fitness, so we're looking at the younger working seniors possibly having some evenings or weekend hours, so that'll be one of her goals next year is coming up with, how are we gonna staff that, how are we going to operate that? So, short term, that's gonna be something she's gonna be working on as part of her goals.
You know, talking to any younger seniors, I don't know, being more active and maybe even working longer, they may come to some functions or events at the senior center if the hours were until, say, 8 o'clock or something, because I think, I think right now it's difficult for that active working senior to get and use the facility because of, they're working.
I've had a lot of requests from people, so as Councilmember Palmer, we work until 5, but you close at 4:30, we'd like to take advantage of some of the facilities.
Right, and we needed to get to that one fee, and as you can see, the proposed 2018, we needed to get to that one fee so that when we advertise and market to those people, we can say, it's only $17 for you to come and use the facility. It's too, like I said, it's too cumbersome to go and say, a pick and choose type structure.
Well, speaking of pick and choose, and this is gonna muddy the water a little more, but there's also been some requests and, I'm kinda curious about it, I think other senior centers are doing this, that there may be the opportunity to have a multi-generational packet membership where you may have, you know, anything from a grandchild to a great-grandchild, depending upon that family makeup, and having a certain number of, I guess, maybe not necessarily programming specific to that, but that opportunity for intergenerational learning.
Well, I think that can be just done through the programming, but if it's like, if they come in and just use the facility, then I do believe it kinda takes away from our mission, which is for individuals that are 50 and above.
Well, no, with that individual, not by themselves, so in other words, you know...
Grandma, grandpa.
Grandma, grandpa, yeah, exactly. I know you guys have like an occasional event where it's open.
Right.
Like that, but that's just been some further requests in the community for, that is an option.
I've been to, I'm on the board of Evergreen Village, and I've been to some leading age conferences, and the issue comes up, there's a lot of grandparents that don't have their grandchildren nearby, and there's a lot of children that don't have grandparents nearby, so there's programs in different cities, one of which I think is called Buddies, where the older people adopt a younger person, and they have an opportunity to really learn about each other because the grandparents, they may see them once a year, so that type, those type of programs, where it's, they're helping each other to kinda learn about the whole different generational thing. And I've heard comments from a woman who was the superintendent of schools, I think in Cleveland, she said, in many communities, don't forget grandparents are only in their 40s. They're not the grandparents we, most of us grew up with, that, you know, grandmas had that purple-blue hair, which they don't do anymore. So I think that's something we should look at for the future is...
To look at more options in the generational programming end of that.
Generational, filling that gap where the kids don't really see grandparents that often and vice versa, would be very healthy.
I know we did, well, they've been doing it with the North High School with some of the technology programs, and I agree that maybe the grandparent and the adopting of a grandchild sounds neat. Earlier this year, we did do a program with the senior center and the special ed programs through the school district where we had fishing event down at the senior center. That typically was held at Monomony Park, and it was in the spring, when you didn't know what type of weather you were going to get, so we had some discussions with the school district staff, and because we have the indoor facility at the senior center, everything was held there. We had the fishing pier, we worked with Sweetwater Marine, as well as the boat club, they were, the kids were getting boat rides, as well as Otter Street Fishing Club provided fishing poles for each one of the kids. We got the bait donated, we got meals donated, so I think a lot of those, that could be in the start of some things. We've had some discussion with other special needs parents. Councilmember Palmer brought up the woodshop earlier about maybe bringing younger people in to learn the trade of woodshop. We had some special needs parents saying, maybe not the machines, but just hand tools and learning how to use hand tools with children with special needs, so I think there's a number of ways we can look at that.
They wanna work with Boys and Girls Club too.
Sure. But back to Councilmember Herman, that is something that we will be looking at, especially now that Jean's got her feet on the ground and getting some of those things organized there, because it does come with a cost, there's staffing costs, there's overhead costs that need to be looked at as well, so.
Is there a specific, one person who called in particular asked whether or not there was a specific woodshop fee, but it looks like to me, based on this, the proposal is that would fall under the creative expression membership, which allows you access to, is this an either/or, or all art, studio, computer lab, woodshop?
Right. What, what came out of this, the tax audit, was we had a lot of things that were included in these fees that actually fell into non-tax categories. So what we did was, we condensed and found out what items should be taxed, and we attached them to what needed to be a fee and a taxable fee. Some of the woodshop items fell under a non-taxable program, which we will be doing that and putting those more into the January newsletter and into more of our programming part of it. So what we did was, we just found what would be a taxable, whenever you, we're considered a recreation center, and when you charge for people to come in, it becomes a taxable item. So we're trying with this structure to work with what's taxed and what's not taxable items, so.
But as far as the woodshop, the drop-in type program, or if they wanna come in and just simply use the shop, that is that, that drop-in rate of 125 or 150 it is, but then...
The classes are in a different category.
Correct.
Correct. If they're gonna be doing a class and producing a product, then it will be under a program, and what Jean and her staff will do probably through their programming account is figure out, alright, we have a staff member we have to pay, here's the material cost, and...
Is that the same, is the same true then with, say, knitting, you know, that you could do drop-in, I don't know?
You can do drop-in, but the minute that you attach supplies or an instructor, then it falls under the non-tax category.
Gotcha, okay.
So, so we've been...
Lot of bean counting.
Yes.
It was a learning experience for all.
And the fees are the same if you live in the city of Oshkosh or outside the city?
No, no.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because there wasn't really a consistency to charging a non-resident rate. What we found when Jean looked at the fee structure was, most of the programs were, the non-residents were paying one and a half times, so we pretty much said, anything non-resident at this point, we're gonna be charging one and a half times the resident rate. That really covers both of the senior center accounts, so unless there's other questions, we can move forward.
So that would bring us to page 194 for the Riverside Cemetery.
I'm gonna let Bill take this one over. The cemetery is, it's, like forestry is a very limited account, very straightforward. There were a couple of items that Bill wanted to touch on as far as significant accomplishments and things that he'll be working on though.
Yeah, thank you, Ray. This year was pretty exciting out at the cemetery, believe it or not, but we've decided that we need to do a little more active marketing, and, because a lot of people who come in didn't even realize that we still sell spaces, that we still do burials and that sort of thing, so we partnered with Ann, and she helped us create a social media presence, and then we also put together a marketing plan to go forward so that we can, you know, start creating more awareness within the community about, you know, the resource that we have there at Riverside Cemetery, and then also emphasize some of the historic character of the property, because it is on the National Registry of Historic Places, and we have historic buildings there, a lot of historic monuments and that, that sort of thing there. So with that, Donna Brodsky, who is our office manager there, decided to reinvent the historic cemetery tour, so we've had several different tours this, last spring and this fall, and we intend to continue with that program into next year, so we've had pretty good attendance, the tours have been well-received, and it creates a kind of a opportunity for folks to actually come into the property, to get to know it a little better, and that also what we offer as far as services out there as well.
Is that person from the museum?
No, Jenny Gross used to do it years ago, and so Donna Brodsky is actually our staff member at the cemetery. She's a halftime clerk there, so she handles all the calls coming in, and then also has done a lot of research about the property too, so we're pretty excited about that, so you know, you'll see Facebook posts and things like that regarding upcoming cemetery tours and that sort of thing, so I'd encourage you to attend if you get the opportunity. I think at some point Donna may visit the council too to kind of give you a little background on the tour too, when...
I think I took a tour when Jenny was doing it, like way back.
Yeah, she discontinued those a number of years ago, so we're trying to kinda, you know, change it up a little bit and keep it interesting, and that's, that as well, so. Then also, we, we've made some record-keeping upgrades, as you'll see, and a number of years ago, we put in the cemetery information management system, which basically replaced our DOS operating system out there, so we've actually got everything into a better digital management system now, so that all of our records and mapping is more fluid, so as you'll see in one of the... Um, so, as, as you'll see in one of the requests is we're, we're actually hoping to upgrade that so that, uh, to an e-Sims program, which, uh, allows, uh, better, uh, smartphone capabilities. Uh, so we could actually take photographs of a headstone. It'll bring us to a map. Um, so it's, you know, there's been some improvements in that software. So, um, we're hoping to add on, uh, the e-Sims program too, which will help us and eventually be able to get out, um, uh, to the internet more so that people can do some of their own research. We tend to do a lot of genealogical research at, at our office, uh, for folks as they come in. But we're, we're trying to, uh, make this more available through Find a Grave and that sort of thing too. So, uh, the e-Sims program will help us quite a bit. We also had, um, a, a very generous donation, um, that came in this year from the Johnny Kinzel Foundation that allowed us to, uh, do some repairs on the interior of the chapel. Um, the, uh, over the years, uh, you know, just some moisture and humidity had caused some plaster, um, to, uh, crack and decay a little bit. And then also it hadn't been painted for, we don't know for how long. But, um, but the, uh, through the donation, we were able to bring in lab restoration and, uh, refixed up all the plaster work, uh, and repainted the entire interior. So, um, invite you all to get out there sometime and take a look at that. Um, it's, uh, it turned out really beautiful. So, um, we also include the chapel as part of our historic cemetery tours as well. So, um, we've done a lot of work over that building over in my tenure here. We've replaced the, the roof, uh, um, you know, and, uh, both the flat roof and the tile roof and done quite a bit of tuck pointing on the masonry part of the structure. So, uh, you know, we're in pretty good repair out there. There's always a few little minor things that we could do. But we're, our, our hope is to, um, better utilize that facility because it's, you know, essentially been, you know, un, underused for, you know, quite a long time. So, we feel that with some of the restoration that we can open it up for meetings or other events.
It can be rented.
Right, yes. So, um, so we, we wanna make it, you know, available to folks. And, uh, we were a little hesitant to do that when the plaster and paint was in poor repair. So, um, so more on that as, as we proceed. Can I retain any other questions if anybody has any on that?
I guess, oh, sorry. One thing is we've all gotten an email from a couple of people concerned about dogs in the cemetery. Um, is there much we can do? I know it's posted that they're not allowed in the cemetery, but.
It is posted. Um, yeah, it, it is posted at the entry points. Um, our, our foreman out there is, has also worked with the sign department. They're creating some larger signs that we're gonna put out there. Um, the ones we have now are fairly small. It's, it's been on our signs for years. But, um, I, I think a lot of the issue is, you know, people wanna get to the Wyll Wash Trail and if they're coming from the neighborhood, it's easiest just to walk through the cemetery, obviously. Um, we approach people when we see them and let them know. Um, I know when I come into work in the morning at six o'clock, you know, I see people coming from across the street through the cemetery with dogs occasionally. Um, you know, so, you know, it, um, you know, it hasn't really, we haven't really seen a lot of, you know, like waste issues or anything like that out there. But, you know, we, we, you know, explain to folks that they need to be respectful of the property and, and that sort of thing. And it isn't one of those properties that we allow dogs on within the ordinance, so.
Oh, like the trails? Uh, they're not even allowed just on the trails there, right?
Uh, well, they can go on the Wyll Wash Trail with dogs.
I mean, the, in, in this, yeah, the little street trails in between.
No, there's a specific city ordinance prohibiting that.
But we're, we're hoping to, you know, with the new signage, hopefully get their attention. Because a lot of times we'll, we'll talk to somebody who's standing right in front of the sign and they say, well, we didn't see a sign. You know, so, you know, there's some educational aspect to it as well.
But it's always easy just to claim oblivion.
Well, right.
Be oblivious about it. Get away a couple of times.
Just so I understand, um, the perimeter, okay, so going northwest from, um, the cemetery, where, where is the boundary when it, I think there's a Yield Goat is a retail establishment on the extreme end, but where, where's our dividing line and what's, what's happening with that kind of property in between the Wyll Wash, uh, trail and Algoma and that retail building?
Okay, at the retail building is, uh, just north of our property boundary. There's, uh, we, we maintain the gravel road that goes, um, you know, and that's actually, you can connect to the Wyll Wash Trail right there too. Um, that area from the, you know, the northernmost point of the burials up to the Yield Goat, um, you know, is essentially future expansion area for the cemetery. Currently, we use it for storage of materials, uh, you know, spoils from excavation. Uh, we, we dump our wood there, our chips and that sort of thing and, um, use it as kind of a work area. We have a, a municipal nursery up there. So, we utilize the property pretty extensively up there, but it ultimately is expansion for future. But, uh, there is, you know, access to the trail from that gravel road as well. So, you can skip onto the Wyll Wash from that point too.
Do we pay to maintain that, I don't know, um, uh, is it swale or ditch between there? Or is that a county thing, uh, with the, between the Wyll Wash and the cemetery?
That, um, that is, I believe, um, the railroad right-of-way, which Wyll Wash is, is essentially county managed at this point. Um, we also have, um, American Transmission Company has right-of-way easement through there too. So, uh, in fact, they're working on it, uh, or will be working on it shortly. They do, um, some brush control through that ditched area. Um, the Wyll Wash is, well, ATC does, yeah. Um, because they can't, they can't have anything that could potentially, you know,
Right.
get into the.
So, we don't have an expense of maintaining that area that's somebody else's?
No, we just basically mow up to the ditch, um, you know, so, you know, between the county's efforts and, uh, you know, the utility, um, companies, they maintain the balance of it at this point.
Okay, so, we're on page one ninety-nine. We'll begin with the park revenue facilities.
Okay. This one, I'm gonna have Jenny joining me because this is a number of, um, areas where Jenny is involved. Um, parks revenue facility really covers a multitude of areas. Um, to give you an idea, we are looking at the zoo, boat launch, the amusement rides area, concessions, um, any vending areas, the Miller's Bay, uh, the mooring plugs and so forth, uh, the REITs concessions, um, Jenny's special events, and then the Lake Fly Cafe. So, the, all of those various areas are, are lumped into this budget. Um, what I wanted to do is just go through, just real quickly, if you take a look at page one ninety-nine, under the twenty eighteen proposed, you're gonna see the grants and aids, twenty thousand, three hundred dollars. That is, um, again, some of that DNR grant funding that we're looking to utilize. Um, back to Mr. Herman's question, that is the, um, the DNR grant funding that will help pay for some of the electronic pay stations we're hoping to put into some of the boat launch areas next year. And then we'll be also utilizing some of the, the boat launch fund for that. Um, and I can show you where that is shortly. A couple of items you're gonna see here, again, back to some of our earlier discussions. If you look at the sixty-one oh-three in this area, you're gonna see that we did overspend considerably in this area. Um, a reason for that is, um, the number of special events that Jenny is now hosting, whether it's at amusements or other areas throughout her facilities, um, we needed to hire more staff. Um, the volunteers, we do as much as we can with the volunteers, um, but we do need designated staff on site as well. So, you're gonna see that, um, we did overspend there and, uh, we anticipate overspending there again this year just based on, uh, the number of special events that Jenny has been pulling in. She'll talk a little bit more about some of those, but as you're well aware, what we try to do is offer events that are either, um, fully supported, sponsored, or low cost of the participants to come into. And I think that's really been our goal, um, not only in this area, but in the Leech when we get into that. Um, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. But, um, I don't have the entire numbers here, but Jenny probably does. But I believe she was able to generate about thirty thousand dollars this year in sponsorships to make all of her programs either sponsor-supported, um, or very close to that. So, um, she does a lot of work soliciting, um, donations and, uh, whether that's monetary or product, and she can talk about some of those. Um, if you take a look at page two hundred and four, these are some of the, um, what we put in as enhancements for some of these areas. Um, there's a, uh, a pretty good fund balance that's been carried over from all of these various areas. And what we're looking to do is utilize some of that, um, fund balance this year. I'll touch on, uh, that page two oh-four if you look. The zoo exhibit, we had hoped to have that project, um, fundraised and completed this year. Um, we're working with the community foundation as well as some other, um, donors to, um, try to raise seventy-five thousand dollars. The entire project is a hundred and fifty. Um, in this year's, um, zoo budget, um, we were intending to use seventy-five thousand dollars, again with the seventy-five in donation match. Um, I believe we have approximately twenty-five thousand of that committed. So, we're probably about fifty thousand dollars short at this point. Um, Carleen and I, Carleen from the foundation and I have been, um, getting the word out to, um, donors that we would like to get this project funded and hopefully constructed next year. So, that project remains in our plans. Um, going down the list, you'll see there's a, um, we're looking to, um, get a walk-in freezer fridge type, um, facility down at our zoo maintenance building. Um, we need to have that for the diet for some of the animals, mainly the wolves and the meat and, uh, the things we need for the otter feed. Uh, we need some additional storage space for the, um, the food. Um, the boat launch kiosks, we, we replaced some of those this year. Those are informational kiosks that you're, are located near the pay stations. Um, we're looking to do a couple more of those. Um, electronic pay stations, um, these would be, um, new for us and we're looking to possibly do three of them next year at some of the boat launches. Um, what people would be able to do is pay with debit card, credit card, cash, um, a little bit easier customer service. Um, it would help us as far as handling money and cash potentially. Um, we've checked with a couple of other communities that have gone to the electronic pay stations and they've seen their revenue go up considerably. Um, one I believe was, um, down in Manona, they saw their boat launch revenue go up about ten thousand dollars, um, in the first summer of using the electronic pay station. So, um, talked about this at the Parks Board and we decided to, um, give it a try at a couple of them next year and see how it works out. And if it, um, is successful, then we'd look at expanding that. So, um, those would be coming, um, a portion of that would be coming out of the boat launch fund in addition to some of the grant funding. At the Lake Fly Cafe, um, we're looking to replace the serving windows. As you can imagine, there's plenty of bugs down there and the concession windows are just a roll-up and down window. Um, we're looking to have screened-in windows with just sliding doors so that there's less lake flies and, and other bugs coming in by our staff and.
Then you have to change the name.
Yeah.
It's really the birds.
So, that's what that improvement is. And then at the, um, again, at the zoo maintenance building and not the zoo mountain building. I see there's a misprint there. Um, there's some, um, remodeling we need to do for the restroom facility in there as well as, um, we do have some animals that we keep in there for the year and we need to improve their exhibits for them to, uh, remain in that facility. So, Chad is continuing to work on that. Um, I'm gonna let Jenny briefly go over some of the, um, some of the accomplishments that we got listed and then some of the, the objectives that'll be coming up. And if there's questions, she can help answer those.
Thank you. Um, so we did have a, um, we had a good year, um, under this budget. Like Ray mentioned, um, at the amusement center, we have five events every year. Um, well, we actually, I should take that back. We typically had three events. Chad wanted to see me add, um, two more events, so we had one each month essentially, one from May till September. So, that was one of my goals for twenty seventeen. So, we added on a bubble day, um, this summer. And then we added on like an end-of-the-year event, which was like a Children's Day parade we did. And then we had, um, pony rides that day and things too. So, both of those events went great. Um, we did get all of our events this year over at the amusement center a hundred percent sponsored. So, anything we did there was free for families to come with their kiddos and enjoy the day and they were all sponsored. So, um, our bubble days, we had, um, the university came over. We did all different experiments with the kids. They had big pools of bubbles to play with. We had ones where they could blow bubbles everywhere. We had bubble machines and games and crafts, um, partnered with the Girl Scouts as well, so they could do some bubble prints and just fun things that kids love. We, um, like Ray mentioned, as all the events kinda get bigger and bigger and people kinda find out about them, that they're free, we really have to put more staff on just cause they get really crazy and hard to manage without having, um, staff there. So, um, the end-of-the-year event that we had this year too is great. Um, all the kiddos, they had built their little floats, whether it's a wagon or a bike or whatever. They did, um, some really cute little ideas. And we had little, you know, medals and trophies and things and we had punch and cookies, um, and pony rides. So, it was a great, it was on that weekend though, it was like ninety-five degrees in September. So, it was interesting, but it was good. Um, so definitely things that we'll do again. It was a lot of fun. Um, we did purchase, um, three new, they call them supboards or the stand-up paddleboards. Um, we talk it every year. We need to get our water equipment out there more. It's highly used as far as aquabikes and paddle boats, cause people see them from the road driving by. But I can't tell you how many times a day my phone rings and says, oh, you rent kayaking, you know, canoes. They have no idea. So, those things that aren't as visible from people driving by and seeing the big huge wheels. Uh, we still work on really getting those out there and that's the same with those, those paddleboards. You can't see them from the road, so people, you know, we're getting the word out there that we actually have them. Um, so, we work on that and again, you know, working with marketing and just letting people know what we have and what they can rent and how they can rent them type thing, so. Um, and Ray kinda always touched on the, the boat launch stuff, um, always improving those in the kiosk and trying to make them look, you know, nice and for people paying that boat launch fee, so.
Didn't you have like a Monster Bash grown-up event here this fall?
That's through the society, yep. And that actually, um, as far as, um, events in the zoo went this year, we, um, had Zuluine a couple of weeks ago. We had a record-breaking year in fifteen years on Saturday. We saw, um, two thousand seven hundred and forty-six people in one day in four hours. It was crazy. It was wonderful, uh, but again, just, you know, trying to get that many people through and having enough staff to do it. And, um, so it was a beautiful day. It was like seventy-two degrees, so it was wonderful.
The reason I'm asking is, um, I, I was just curious whether or not the zoo in and of itself is a, like a venue that organizations can rent out for fundraisers. I think, I've seen things like Jazz at the Zoo and, you know, these kinds of things in other cities. And I'm just curious whether or not that's something that we do or are looking at doing?
Sure. The society did that one. Um, they had a really great turnout too. Um, you know, unofficially, I believe they said they had about a hundred and seventy-five people that were there that night. Um, it was a beautiful night. I left there about seven-thirty that night, um, after the daytime and stuff and they had a great crowd. So, the society is stepping up and doing more and more and getting more involved. Um, they, you know, they want to. They did a wolf event, um, you know, in the past and they've done some, a otter event. They've done some different things. So, they're stepping up and doing more and more, um, as well, so.
So, the zoo society has what relationship to our funding?
They support the zoo. Um, they fundraise.
They're like a friendzoo?
Uh, right.
Right. What, what they do is, um, there's a zoo education coordinator position that was new this year and they have, um, they're gonna fund that next year, I believe, to the tune of about nine thousand dollars, ten thousand?
Uh, nine thousand.
So, they are, they're supporting a part-time position for education. Um, they'll, they have contributor committed towards, um, helping fund the eagle exhibit. Um, they do educational signage for us. So, they're, they work more on the educational and promotion side in a fundraiser. Um, back to your question about possibly having other events down at the zoo. It's a little difficult having the animals and, uh, dealing with the security. Um, I think knowing that it's the zoo society, we know we can work closely with them. But if there's an interest in some type of event, I'm sure between staff and the zoo society, it's something we'd be willing to sit down and say, maybe we could do something jointly. Um, but as far as saying, yeah, you can rent it for a wedding or something like that, it really gets a little difficult, so.
Yeah, I was just thinking along the lines more of, like, kind of what you're doing now that's more family-friendly. But, I mean, sometimes the adults want, you know, just some adult event to go to that's, you know, another change of scenery. I, again, I didn't know if that was something that you guys were looking at or not.
We used the tent that you've set up for, uh, the children's event.
Yep.
So, we thought we had to have a tent because it was in October. We weren't sure of the weather. The weather was perfect.
It was, yeah.
Jenny, when somebody sponsors an animal, is that through the society or is that through you and goes?
That's the society. Yep. So, it was a good year overall. Lots of, I mean, we have a lot of support for, for our zoo and for amusement center and different things. So, it's great to see.
I didn't look at the numbers this year, but I know last year we were over a hundred and ten thousand visitors through the gate. I don't know if you've looked at.
I don't quite have that done yet.
So, we'll, we'll be able to include that in our final budget document as far as some reports. But, um, well over a hundred thousand people each year. And I go back to, I think it was two thousand and six when the Herrenbergs started with their donation. And I go back to, I think it was two thousand and six when the Herrenberg started with their donation. The attendance was right around forty thousand dollars, so it's gone up considerably over the last ten years. One item I did want to touch on here because it is listed is under our objectives, determine the future of the carousel ride. I know the public has been asking and some of the council members have gotten questions. That ride is very old, we had to take it down because some of the major bearings on top are in disrepair. Preliminary cost estimates, we're getting anywhere between a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand dollars to repair that. We're trying to work on some donors and some possible fundraisers, but looking online, we're able to find a, an operable carousel for anywhere from sixty to a hundred thousand dollars. So some of, those are some of the things we're gonna have to start taking a look at. Do we replace it with a carousel, do we look at something like a miniature golf outing or something? We're generating some ideas internally as well, something that might be less maintenance other than putting in another carousel, even though we are hearing from people they'd like to see it return, but it is a large chunk of money that we really don't have. So we're evaluating that and hopefully within the next year, we'll be able to figure out what's going on, so.
Henry Villas did that with their carousel in Madison and they have perfected getting money from people. Society has talked about going down there and talking to their people, how have you raised this kind of?
Is that a pavilion enclosed one?
Yeah, they're just gorgeous.
And those are some of the ones we're seeing online that have a canopy or something over to keep the weather off it a little bit more. So, you know, do we go down the route of repairing what we have or look for something new to come in? And still, we'd have to come up with that additional fund, so.
I think the only thing we want to notate, just because I asked about it, is the miscellaneous in that amount fluctuates due to the timing of the Herrenberg donation.
Yes, and I can, I'll touch on that real quickly. If you take a look at twenty fifteen, for example, you'll see the miscellaneous revenue was at about a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. If you look back to twenty fourteen, not being on the sheet, it probably was low, down at about fifty thousand maybe because what we do is the Herrenbergs and the foundation will get us that sixty-five thousand dollars when it's beneficial for them, for tax purposes, whatever that may be. We may get it by the end of the year or we may get it within the first two months of the year. If, looking at this year, you'll see the two thousand seventeen year end, or I'm sorry, the appropriation, the one sixty-three. That included the Herrenberg donation as well as our miscellaneous sponsorships, but also we were hoping for that seventy-five thousand dollars in funding and donations for the eagle exhibit. That has not come to fruition yet, we are hoping that by the end of the year it will, so we've included that in a year in estimate yet. But then you'll see next year it drops because we removed that seventy-five thousand that we're hoping we're raising. So that one will always fluctuate, like Trina said, based on timing.
Well, how do you account, the nine thousand dollars or eight thousand, this, we pay for the education coordinator? What, how does that get recorded here? We have to run it through the city for a pay, but.
It's actually, yeah, it's a donation coming from the society, we'll put that into the miscellaneous and the individual that's hired is actually a city employee then, but it's, so yes, it is accounted for in the miscellaneous, that is correct. There's no other questions, I think we can move on to the leech. Trina, you good?
Yep, on page two oh five.
This is a, again, a fairly straightforward, I would say stagnant budget for the most part. I'm gonna let Jenny talk about some of the events again because hopefully some of you were able to get down to the Tuesday nights, which this year was overwhelming based on what our expectations were and we hope to see that continue. The one item again you'll see here is the sixty-one oh three for next year is going to be going up again because we're looking at not only possibly adding some additional events, but increasing the hourly salary for part-time seasonal individual. So I'll let Jenny talk a little bit about some of her events.
Yeah, this one, you know, we had an excellent year down there. The Tuesday night concert series, we had over four thousand people attend those six nights this year. That is sponsored by Verba Credit Union, they were extremely, extremely happy, so on board for next year already for a sponsorship for that event. We brought in food trucks this year, which was great, a great addition. We had some really good bands down there, we had some really good weather down, one night bad storms, but the other five, you know, we had really good weather. So really great to see between the bands, the marketing, the advertising and the food trucks, brought in some really, you know, really good crowd. So we're hoping to continue to build that, possibly try, you know, maybe a Friday night as well, having a band down there. So we were really, really excited about that. Love having that facility full of people, just having a good time. You see kind of earlier in the evening, you know, families will come down with their kiddos and get them some food and kind of enjoy the entertainment and then maybe they leave and then the next crowd comes down and gets some food and listens to the night music. So it's a really great, a great night down there for everybody. So in addition to that, we had four family movie nights down there. We had a Touch a Truck event and we also had the Kids from Wisconsin, which was kind of an unexpected thing and all those also were fully covered. So none of them costed, you know, this budget any money, we were able to find sponsors for all those movies, Kids from Wisconsin and Touch a Truck. So anything we made in concessions then, then becomes, you know, extra money for us in the budget, but there's no cost of the people coming to any of those events. Between all the, the Kids from Wisconsin, we, you know, definitely had good over fifteen hundred people. It was a great day and people really liked them. Touch a Truck, we definitely had over two thousand people and the movies, we saw over fifteen hundred people on those four movie nights. So again, anyway, we can continue to just get those dates out there for people to come and enjoy those free family events, so. But lots of good sponsors again in this account, so it didn't cost any, any dollars out of the budget.
I just want to bring the, to the attention of the council, you'll see the fund balance. We're consistently hovering around that thirty-three, thirty-five. This is an area that Trina and Mark and I have talked about, that one of our goals since we've taken over the programming there is to not continue to see that deficit grow. And I think Mark and Trina have been giving some thought to asking the council in the near future maybe to usually maybe use some cash to pay off that, to get it to zero it out eventually, but that'll be a discussion that we'll have in the future. But at least I wanted to point out, as Jenny said, we're trying to get as much sponsors, so we're not consistently seeing that, that dollar amount continue to go in the hole at this point, so.
That hole was dug quite a while ago and it's maintained at that negative thirty-five thousand and Trina and I were talking about that anticipating the question.
Kind of like the parking utility.
No, it's not like that because this is, this was, you know, when PMI ran it before two thousand and nine. I think within the, for my first couple of weeks of being here, PMI called that we're not gonna do this anymore. And that's where we, the first couple of years after PMI left, we went down into that hole and then when Ray got here, we studied that ship. But that negative's been there for this entire decade and I think just to make it clean, it's identify some of these funds. We've done that in the past, not ones that have hundreds of thousands of dollars, but one of these ones were, I'll just call it a little hole and just to get it back on track, might be appropriate just to zero those out and then fresh start.
So we would put that under one of our loss categories?
Basically take the money from the general fund, just zero it out and be done with it.
I know we're butting up to our time limit here, so if there's no questions, I'll keep going into the pool budget, which is on page two oh nine. This year was obviously not the best summer for swimming. If we hit ninety degrees once, I think we were lucky. So you're gonna see that in the fees and charges, the revenue was down. So you're gonna see not a good year at the pool. Luckily, we have a little bit of a fund balance going here, so we can absorb that and hope for a better summer next year. Your, one item I wanted to point out that if the council recalls earlier this spring, I let you know that the recreation department, because we contract with them for the guards, they were having troubles getting enough lifeguards. What we ultimately ended up doing them was told them to increase their hourly salaries by about a dollar an hour. They did that, they were able to get enough staff and that is under line number, line item sixty-four forty-six. It's called contractual employment. So you're gonna see that we budgeted a hundred and twenty-six, figuring we may have to have a little bit of room in there knowing that the economy was getting better, it still came in under budget, but we are gonna plan that they're gonna, you know, continue to possibly increase their lifeguard rates as well. And similarly, looking at our sixty-one oh three, we're expecting we're gonna have to increase our seasonal rates because this is one area, we struggle to get people to operate our concessions and our admissions. So we're looking at that increase here as well. Otherwise, it's a pretty, pretty consistent budget. We are looking at, if you look at page two twelve, machinery and equipment, we're looking to replace some of the deck chairs. We have not done that in a number of years, so we're looking to replace, looks like fifty deck chairs out there to help with making sure people have somewhere to sit when they come. Any updates Jenny on anything?
No, just like as Ray said, I mean, I'm, at least we got what we got for the summer, it was extremely low. I mean, really cool days, really cool nights, quite low attendance, so that's, I mean, some summers are like that, I guess, so. But other than that, we did have some good special events. Our special event sponsor over there is Winnebago Community Credit Union, so we do six special events. They sponsor that one for three thousand dollars and they are back next year too, so they're excited, they like what we do over there. So they're on board for twenty eighteen, so that's exciting and we're gonna kind of, they asked if they could kind of help do some new logos next year just to kind of change some things up, they have an intern coming in, so we said, yeah, absolutely, we'll work with them. So they're excited for next year and we hope for better weather next year. So other than that, it was, you know, it was a good summer besides the weather, so.
Okay. I just had one last follow-up question and that was kind of going back to citizen request for, apparently they're, they're planning to come to Parks Advisory Board, going back to Skateboard Park. Where is that in our, is that in our general parks?
Skateboard Park, yes, would be in the general parks.
Wasn't that like fundraised by a private group, if I recall, or maybe I'm thinking of something else?
There was contribution from the foundation, there might have been a small fundraising effort. You might be thinking that a couple of years ago, actually just after I started, the BMX Bike Group was trying to raise some money and that just fell by the wayside.
Yeah, they spent all their money out at the.
Out at the county.
Expo Center on that. I mean, it's BMX racing, but that track has got blacktop in some areas, it's got, they've spent a lot of money working on that project. But that being said though, to the Skateboard Park, we haven't, do we have any maintenance issues or things? I didn't see anything in our budget this year, I know last, so last year, year before, we spent some money on the, improving the skate park.
We did, we had some concrete work. I'd have, I believe we have something in our CIP, I'd have to check with Chad, he has that on his list. And I, unfortunately, I don't have that here, but we do have some maintenance items there. The biggest thing we find there sometimes is the vandalism, some spray painting. When there's bikes in there with the, you know, the metal components that then chip the concrete, that's why the bikes were not allowed.
Always like the same really with the scooters?
Sometimes with the scooters as well. The metal pieces will chip off the concrete, which then cause concerns for the skateboarders and us for maintenance.
That being said, that's on the west side of Las Gosh, along with our disc golf. Is there any discussion of maybe a second one somewhere with the growth of the city or incorporating one of our existing parks and a new, another skateboard area?
There's not, but as part of the corp update, which we're going through, we could possibly look at one of those.
I'm just thinking, you know, that again, having free entertainment, there are things for kids to do that's somewhat safe. Be a nice opportunity.
Yep, we can make a note of that and maybe put it in at one of the west side parks or one that might be developed in the future. Okay. Yes.
Thank you.
My, our final one is golf, so we've got both Trace and Scott here. This is one I did hand out, there are some proposed golf course fee increases next year. You can take a look at those and I can maybe have Trace walk through, the ones that we're looking at any increases are the, obviously the bolded ones under the proposed rates. The backside of the sheet will give you the anticipated additional revenue from each of those areas with a total expected increase in revenue of about eleven thousand six hundred dollars. A number of those haven't been increased in a few years. Trace also takes a look at other golf courses in the area to look at what they're charging. And as far as the, the season itself, as you're aware, Scott took over the supervisor role when Steve Dobish retired back in May. He helped keep the golf course going and I know I've gotten a lot of comments and hopefully the council members that have been out there, I've heard from league players that I play in that the course was in good shape, so I wanted to make sure Scott was aware of that and all the work that Trace does. I don't know if there's anything you guys want to highlight, I know Trace has a couple of items as far as some of the increases that you did.
Just go over the golf course, it's been just your average year out there, as you can imagine. Couple of things for this year, I was looking to increase league participation, I looked and started Tuesday night league. My goal was sixteen golfers to at least get it going. I ended up capping it at forty golfers. We had so much people wanting to play, it was basically a group of guys that wanted to play after work because most of the leagues start too early, so we did five-thirty shotgun. Going forward, no problem, we'll get that to eighty people in the future. There's, it was that popular this year, a lot of people already wanting to sign up. The other thing, you know, we've always tried to increase out there is lessons, trying to get new people into the game. Last I looked, I think we're up about twenty-five percent in lessons this year. Started a junior program as well, the rec department does run a junior program out there as well, but I started one up this year, so we could just get more kids out there throughout the entire summer. And the fees, the increases there that Ray mentioned earlier, the main ones are daily fees, they haven't been touched. Anytime I look at fees at the golf course, I do look at all the golf courses in the area. We're never by any means the lowest, we're not the highest either, we kind of fall in the middle, that's always the goal. Not trying to undercut other businesses in the city. And just these fees just need to be touched up, they hadn't been touched in a couple of years. Season passes went up this year, so that's why they all remained the same. And going forward, next year, like I said, you know, the game plan is to increase that league as well as potentially add another league and then it's all remaining the whole sponsorships, that was a little challenging this year to sell whole sponsorships. But we wanna sponsor each hole, there's just extra money that comes in, doesn't, the only thing that costs us is just a little bit for the signage. So otherwise, I'll let Scott talk about what he did on the golf course.
Well, I've kind of gone through the budget here and I, I need to do some maintenance on ten mower heads and six green mower heads. The fairway mower heads, I haven't been done since I've been there. That's about six thousand dollars and the greens mower heads is about three. And I don't see that in here at all.
We did bump up.
You did bump that up?
In your sixty-four twenty-six, you're gonna see a jump in that light on for some of the mower heads there, so we did incorporate that.
Okay.
And this next, next year is the final year of the golf course, or the golf cart rental agreement as well. So we will have that to contend with or to, again, come back to the council and possibly selling those as we did a couple of years ago.
What is the balance on that lease agreement? The golf cart lease agreement? What do we still owe?
Well, we pay about.
It's yearly, it's twenty-three thousand dollars a year.
Yep, you'll see that under sixty-four thirty-two, that's essentially the lease payment. As far as the balance on the purchase, the own, I don't have that in front of me, I'd have to get that through purchasing, they have the agreement on that.
I mean, I guess what I'm asking is what would we owe if we did not go through the full lease?
That I would need to get back to you on.
Okay, okay. And do we by chance have a calculation to, like a cost dollar amount, I guess, if you will, for the, I guess, stormwater mitigation that is per acre? That, that, that piece of land serves, do we have anything that kind of balances off of what of our, some of our other stormwater goals are?
I would, I don't think we do at this point. We did have the, we did apply for the water credit, the stormwater credit this year, which is going to be cutting our storms who are raid out there considerably. And part of that study may have looked at some of that, I'd have to check with engineering and Laura through our engineering helped me on some of that project. So let me make note of that question as well and try to get you that answer.
Thanks.
And right, same question I asked for the senior center, are the fees the same for resident and non-resident?
That is correct. Unfortunately, at the golf course, we, we don't even really. Unfortunately, at the golf course, we, we don't even really track residency. We don't track, like when you go to Fleet Farm, they ask for your, you know, your zip code or whatever. We, we don't have that. We have a simple cash register system at this point. So, going in the future, it'd be something we'd want to start tracking. Otherwise, it
And, and one other thing I'd like to touch on is, uh, we need a new twenty-horse pump, which is thirty-one hundred dollars, including fittings.
For the
For the pump house, yeah. Yeah, we lost that.
That's not in here?
I think we did.
I thought we put it in here as well, so we'll have to go back in and, and double check.
Probably under minor equipment, I would imagine. That's normally where that kind of thing is.
I agree.
Got to double check though.
Got a lot, got a lot, over twenty years out of that pump, so it's, had a good life.
We did discuss it when we met.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we made those minor changes at the end.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. And hopefully, we can just keep the course running as smooth, as smooth as it was this year.
I do have to say, Trace and Scott have been nothing but pros through this, all this uncertainty they've been going through. I want to publicly thank them in front of council.
Sure. It's been stressful.
Amen to that.
Yes, it is.
That is the end of our budgets. But, before I ended, you've heard a lot about the, the different ways we're doing marketing and the different fundraising and grant writing. I want to make sure that the council understands with Ann, Ann Schaefer, who is a position that we funded eighteen months ago between the Parks Senior Center and the Planning Division, has been working out great. Hopefully, Alan and his staff will tell you the same. If you look through the budget, you'll see her accounted for in the different areas. Just to give an idea, in the senior center budget, she is about point five-three FTE, Parks point two-seven, and then Planning is about point one-zero. So, essentially, she's spending about a day helping planning staff, a lot with the neighborhood association work. And then, the rest of the time spent with Parks. When I say Parks, it's with the golf course, senior center, Parks, Jenny, Pool. She's doing a great job and I think that
We could use five more of her.
We could.
Might solve our budget problems if we had five more of her.
Yeah, um, it's, it's really been a good cooperation between the departments. And I think, talking with the neighborhood associations, I think they would say the same thing. So, I wanted to make sure that you're aware that she's bringing in a lot of dollars for the city.
Yeah, these, these shared positions are creative ways of approaching some of our more challenging issues when we can't quite staff fully in one area. That sharing of that resource or that person is really helpful.
That's it?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on.
We'll move on to our last budget of the year for the council workshops and that would be our museum budget. Brad Larson is here to present his budgets primarily. The mo, the majority of his activity does happen in one fund, but he does have a few supplemental funds as well. And so, he starts on page three forty-five. And this would be the museum membership fund. Again, this is one of his supplemental funds where you do see a, a small amount of transactions and revenue generation.
I'd rather start with operating, if it would be okay. Would you, the, let me just first, I've been watching the, the workshops online and I have to say, I'm gonna echo a lot of what you've heard from the other departments for a day and a half in that there's really not a lot of change in my, my budget, is, in the, except for personnel-related. Museum's had a really good year this year. Of course, top of the line is People of the Waters. That really kind of tops everything because that's the number one part of our strategic plan. So, we've had a really good year and we're poised for a great year in 2018. We have a lot of things that are, are planned and are scheduled. So.
Page three fifty-five is the, is the operating budget for the museum?
Yeah. So, in my budget, the, the main thing I want to point out is we have two full-time positions, one part-time position, and three interns, which are supported by either our trusts or our funds or private donations. So, that totals a hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. So, we get a lot done from those staff members or those staff positions that are funded through, not necessarily the tax levy, but through alternate sources. So, I want to point that out. That's really a, a, a big part of what we have been able to do over the cup, over the last few years is because of those positions. Our, one big thing we're gonna do in, in 2018 is we're gonna move to a different, a different merchandise sales system. It's actually through the munis system. And right now, we have a hard time tracking our, our sales, our admissions. Ray mentioned that a lot of what they do at the golf course is all through a cash register system. And it's the same as at the museum. It's the same thing that would have happened, say, thirty years ago. So, by moving to a new admission system, we're gonna be able to track those people much clearer, the number of members, the number of kids, the number of adults, where they come from. It's gonna be a really good change for us. And the other change is we're going to an online merchandise sales system. We've talked about this for a long time. And it's something we really need to do, and so, we're gonna make that move in 2018. We get so many people that are asking, can I buy this or can I buy that online? And right now, they can't. And that's all lost sales for us. So, that's gonna be a big change for us. And I think it's gonna be a very good change. And that actually is reflected, not in the operating budget. We, we actually pay for that system through our membership budget. But, the revenue that we generate would be reflected in, in the income in, in the operating budget. We're all really excited about that.
With the online, is that something that your current staff can handle? Or are you looking for additional help?
No, we can all, we can handle that. And actually, when we were building People of the Waters, we actually built in a storage room because we need to have a place to actually have the, the merchandise that we're gonna sell in a ready position and all the material that we need for packing and shipping and all of that. So, we thought about that when we were building People of the Waters and actually built that little mini facility into the exhibit. It's actually kind of in a back corner false wall. So, we can do that in-house and we, we had some conversations about that, so. So, that's a big move for us. And then, I will mention that we have submitted a twenty-eight thousand dollar grant, which is not reflected in my budget, to the Wisconsin Department of Tourism. It's through their, called Joint Effort Marketing Grant for 2018. So, we won't know whether we actually were awarded that grant until into next year. So, if we are awarded that grant, and I think we have a very good shot at, at getting it because of what we have scheduled next year, then the budget would have to be amended a little bit to reflect that.
But, doesn't that JEM grant, I know there's multiple ones, but isn't there a component of that that requires like some new offering, a new kind of medium?
Yeah, and that's, that's what this is. So, it's primarily for attracting an audience that's outside the region.
Okay, okay.
So, it would be, we would market primarily in southern Wisconsin, northern Illinois, the Twin Cities and Iowa. And our last JEM grant was in 2014 for the Tiffany Window Exhibition. But, we have some good exhibitions coming up. Replay is a, is our big winter one. So, I think combined with Replay and People of the Waters and some other things, I think we have a really good, really good shot at it. So, that's just a little overview of, of the budget. And so, now I'll, if you have any questions on there, I'd be happy to answer them. The only adjustments that you probably would see in there are some things for insurance. There was a, a general adjustment of insurance for the year.
I would just have a question about, so you've got a one full-time graphic artist and then your museum marketing membership coordinator. I'm sure everybody is really busy, but I'm just curious. Are there any opportunities there? Let's say the, the senior center or the library needed some assistance. Do you, do you ever loan your people to the other departments?
Quite often, actually. Both, both those two positions have been loaned out to various departments. The library just got a graphic position of its own last, maybe it was this year. I can't recall. So, not so much with the graphic person. It's easier actually to loan the expertise of the marketing person than it is the graphic person, simply because we have so much graphic work in-house.
Right.
And we try to do as much in-house as we can as opposed to contracting it out
Sure.
because it's cheaper than doing it.
The graphic art, the graphic artist updated the city's logo and worked on the welcome signs too.
He also worked on Oshkosh Media's logo as well.
So, there are no capital items for 2018 for the museum. Do you want to just, maybe just give a high-level overview of the other budgets? There's minimal impact and no levy contributions, if I recall correctly.
Correct. I'll start with the membership budget, which is the first one that we mentioned before. I think it's two four, uh, three forty-five. The membership budget is really strong and we count on the membership budget for a co, many ways. It's, our membership is our core. It's the people that support the museum, not just through their membership, but when we do fundraising activities, the membership are really the folks that we court for contributions. So, if we looked at the membership budget from that point of view and as advocates, the membership assumes a much greater importance than just the dollars that you see here. We use the membership budget for things like that e-tapestry project I talked, talked about, the online sales. That's a good example. They support exhibitions. They support, not in full, but in part, one of the full-time positions that we have, the museum assistant curator position. So, the membership is a very key component of, of the museum and we're, we tapped the membership fund very heavily this year and last year for People of the Waters. Our goal in 2018 is, I guess the best way to put it is to rein back a little bit and build that fund back up. So, we've been very successful with that. Our membership is growing slowly, but it's growing. And it's projects like, like the newsletter, which we get a tremendous feedback on, People of the Waters. All those things combined are what really contribute to them, to the growth of the membership fund. Uh, the next high-level one is the Exhibitions Fund. The Exhibition Fund is, at this point, almost tapped out because of People of the Waters. Plus, we had to put the down payment for the Replay Exhibition. So, our goal is to rebuild that fund. However, looking long-term, and this is something I'll want to talk with Ms. Larson about, is perhaps eliminating the Exhibition Fund and we would just use the Membership Fund as the vehicle. There's really no point in having those two funds. So, we may, you may very well see that Exhibition Fund just go away for the 2019 budget.
Brad, what is the Replay that you
Replay, it was put together by the same firm or the man that did the Lego exhibit a, a couple of years ago. And Replay is a, is focused on pop art, pop culture, and primarily trying to captivate our work on the nostalgia from the nineteen eighties. And a key part of our strategic plan was to try to capture a younger audience by focusing on nostalgia. And pop culture is very hot right now. So, it's really art on pop culture themes that were popular in the nineteen eighties. But, it also has a Lego component and at least one of those sculptures will have been done by Nathan Soweah. So, this is gonna travel the United States and Oshkosh is the first place that it will start. So, we're, we're hoping for good things. And this is a big part of the Wisconsin Department of Tourism Grant. And when they heard about it, they were pretty excited. That's why I think we have a good shot at getting the, the marketing grant.
And when will that be?
It opens in February. Can't think, like, twelfth maybe? And it'll run through the winter months and, and in, in early spring. And that is a really good time for us because people are always looking for something during, during the winter months to do.
That's potentially an opportunity for some of our other venues to put out an eighties band concert type thing and do a package with you, right?
We are, well, we do have, we are working on package with Convention and Visitor Bureau, marketing packages, hotel packages. Uh, so, we're really getting, tying Replay to that. But, I think People of the Waters is also gonna tie to that because now there's two reasons to come. So, we're actually combining the two exhibitions, Replay and People of the Waters. Plus, there's some, um, there's, we're working on some discounts. So, I think it ought to be a pretty good package that we can put together. So, that's that fund. Collections Fund, Collections Fund is strong. We're, we, this year, we had an unexpected, but a very good opportunity to acquire the Helen Farnsworth Mears and her family in that collection. So, we had that expenditure from the Collections Fund. But, that's what it's for. The Collections Fund was created largely from, well, we had a couple of big bequests that were the core, but we also, when we remove something from collections, which we call de-accession, a museum for, term. If we can't place that item in another museum, it's sold at public auction. The money goes back into the Collections Fund. And it's the Collections Fund that funded, that funds the treatment or conservation of artifacts and the acquisition of things like that Mears collection that we purchased at auction. So, we try to keep the Collections Fund about, right at about six hundred thousand dollars, which is what it is right now. So, that fund is strong and we don't really have any anticipated acquisitions this year. And then, the last one is the Duro Trust, which is the big one. The big one was created, it's about three point four million dollars right now. And that's on page, let's see.
My apologies. It appears the Duro has been left out.
Yes. Well, I'll just talk high, high level about it. The Duro's fund is doing very well. We use some of the Duro earnings for People of the Waters. The Duro Fund funds one position, a full-time curatorial position. And then, it also funds the care of collections that are specific to the love that Mr. Duro had, which was decorative arts. However, in 2018, we're pretty much, again, following the same pattern that we did with membership, is we're pulling, pulling back. We're, we're resting that fund so we can rebuild it. And it, it's, it's one of those funds that we want to make sure we're very careful with. We don't want to over, over exercise the use of that fund because it was such a tremendous gift and it's been doing such good things for the museum. It's had a, just an amazing impact in so many ways. So, we don't really have big plans with, for Duro other than funding the one position. So, that's the high-level overview.
Thank you.
That's all we have in terms of the departmental presentations. We have the budget hearing scheduled for the first meeting, first regular meeting in November, which is the fourteenth. The council has a work session the day following, essentially to absorb public input, do final look at the CIP for Public Works, all the other departments.
Thanks, Brad.
Public Works, all the other departments. CIPs have been reviewed already. I think we know why Public Works went so short yesterday. I think maybe we did equipment normally during their operations. We'll still have equipment because that's a, that, that's still a sizable part, but that'll, you, you won't miss that. It's just that, I think that's, we're trying to figure out why it went so short and I think that was why. Be that as it may, we'll be able to do all that. We, we're scheduled to go from five until seven, I believe, that day. And I think we can
What day is it?
That is Wednesday, November fifteenth. It's the day after the regular council meeting. But, we do typically hold the public hearing on the budget. And I think we've already noticed that.
Yes.
Or we will have noticed that.
This Saturday.
Yeah, that'll be this Saturday. So, that'll be the, the hearing will be on the fourteenth and then the, the last work session will be on the fifteenth. And then, budget will be scheduled for adoption by November twenty-eighth because we need to get the tax bills over to the county probably that week. I would imagine by the end of that week. We're pretty close to it. We're pretty close to it.
We produce the tax bills.
Or we have, what do we have to, have to get all the other numbers ready, right?
Yep, so for budget adoption, the tax bills, you, we would anticipate sending out the second week in December. That is a, a week later than traditional, just because of the budget adoption has pushed out a week later.
So we've had three requests for, well, no, two requests for staff, adding to total expense. How do you, we want to adjust those, or is it a?
Typically, what we do.
Do you want us to say, which ones do we support, which ones we don't? How would affect the impact of the budget? Or where could we cut to cover some of those costs? Where do we want to move forward with some of that?
The council at any time can ask us to put something on. Doesn't necessarily have to be what the departments have requested. Something else comes to mind if you want to make any particular proposal to add or delete, or in the case of revenues, look at revenue enhancements. You can do any of those times. We'll provide that, that document that we handed out yesterday at the outset. We'll, as council members, give that to us. Our goal is to give this to you every Friday, just to give you an update on what you have and what you have or haven't done with it right now. If it was today, we would have a blank form for you on Friday, but that, that'll just be to remind you that it's there. If you want to have a couple minutes, you want to talk about it now, that's fine. Or following the public hearing or the work session on the 14th slash 15th, we would do that. And then we would ask that before, now, because of Thanksgiving week, the, the agenda is going to be going out on Wednesday evening, not Friday. So we'll have the last, the last version of this, you'll have in your packet on Wednesday evening, the day before Thanksgiving. And that'll pretty much be the script from which council can work on, because we wouldn't ask them to take votes on any of those things until you were there at the meeting on the 28th. But the more we know about before the meeting, the more we can prepare information, so you can make those decisions. So there were several enhancements that the departments had placed in there. There's also the list of cuts that were there. Obviously, those are very difficult reductions, but they're all there, and council had requested those, and we wanted to make sure.
But those cuts were not figured into what we have.
Correct. Yeah, those were, if.
If we had to.
If we had to, those are things that you could look at. Right now, we're at a 3.9% levy increase. We didn't talk a lot about the revenues, but I think the budget message covers a lot of that. Happy to answer any questions that you might have that came up over the course of that. The state revenues oddly, in some cases, not shared revenue, but in some cases, were up. All the other revenues are pretty stagnant or low. Shared revenue, zero for 20. We haven't seen an increase in 20 years, which is why the levy is the one that ends up getting pushed. Half of the levy increase is due to debt service, but we talked about that in terms of us going shorter on some of our debt. That's a good thing, but the downside of it is, your payments go up. The health insurance helped it a ton, can't, can't deny that. And ICI is one that's also getting frozen again. That's free money. That's, the council can do whatever they wish with that. That can either be.
That was how much? Sixty-one?
Sixty-one thousand, so levy reduction, add to the equipment, I won't say equipment replacement, because I don't want to mislead you on that. It's really more just putting down payment on capital equipment, those types of things, or.
ICI is restricted to capital, not operating.
No, it's not. I'm just suggesting that that sixty-one thousand can be used for one of three things. And I'm, I'm just generalizing. It can be used for whatever purposes, but either levy reduction or put more money into capital, because that's really putting more cash, restoring that level, because we've been at a million dollars. We knocked it down to about, about nine hundred thousand, maybe a little less than that. So to get it back up, we'd need about a hundred thousand. That would get you sixty of it there. Or thirdly, you could review one of the enhancements. So those are kind of your three options with that extra money.
But to move the needle, so to speak, on the levy, doesn't it have to be something like in the upper $300,000 range to even move that levy number down?
We just gave you that as a, a base number to think through. A 1% reduction in the levy means 360,000. You can move it as much or as little, we're just giving you an idea of what a full percent of the levy is, 300 some odd thousand. You can move it as little or as much as you want.
So I don't know if council wants to have this conversation now or later, but I guess I would just be interested in, the first enhancement that we were, was brought to our attention was from Admin Services on the full-time HR Generalist. And it sounded like John was saying they really expected that that would be a full-time need. But if we were, I mean, I can't imagine he would say no to a half-time person.
It would just be a matter of how you pull it off, and I guess that would be a question. If we did this, how would you envision implementing that? Oh, I get, you know, and those are legitimate questions for council to ask staff at the meeting on the 14th, or at the.
Well, I guess there's a.
A work session on the 15th.
Big poing grill in the room, I guess, is, we end up with an agreement with corp, golf course closes. We got staff there, we got equipment there, we got.
How happens to that budget?
Yeah, I mean, do we, do we, do we hang on to stuff? I mean, obviously, we don't do wholesale get rid of, because we don't know what's going to happen with the remainder of the golf course. But at the same time, how are we going to deal with that? I mean, that's really going to be decide, I mean, in some cases, part of that could be decided before we even approve the budget, so.
Ray has, you know, Ray's aware that he'll have to have a transition plan, what we transition to is really the question. In terms of, you know, if there's discussion about continuing with a nine-hole golf course, then we really have to hold off on doing much of anything, although staffing-wise, that might be a difficult thing to hang on to people. That's just the reality. That's why, you know, my, my hats were off the.
It was an awkward position today to even talk about.
Yeah, but they've been, okay, yeah, that's, they're aware of it.
Just awkward, because it's like, we're planning a budget, but it could be no budget, or it could be a partial budget, or it could be half a budget, you know?
In the scheme of things, we'd have to wind down that fund one way or the other. Council have the direction on paying off whatever debts exist, whatever obligations exist. And those include the lease payment that was discussed, as well as prepaid memberships. There are people who have already prepaid their memberships for 2018. Those types of things we'll have to account for right off the top, before we do anything. But then, we're going to need, I think we're going to need some input from the Parks Advisory Board, because what's next? And I think that that's got to be the, the first thing. You know, we dealt with this similarly a few years ago when we disbanded the Health Department. And essentially, what we did was, when we know what we're going to do, then we make the change to the budget. Otherwise, just because you have a budget, doesn't mean you necessarily spend it or do anything with it. We had a full budget for the Health Department, and we never, we just never implemented it. I knew enough that I wasn't going to be approving things left and right for Health Department. Similarly, I wouldn't be making a bunch of expenditures for golf. I think it would help if the Parks Board got going on it. You know, I think Christmas time's a little much to ask, but right after the first of the year, I think the Parks Board needs to start discussing those types of things, because people are going to be anxious and want to know from you what, what types of things are going to get done. The proceeds, we'll know what the net proceeds are by then, and then we can start talking about that. In the scheme of things, and in the scheme of a $110 million budget, it's, it's $1 million operating budget. It's not a huge amount, but obviously, it's an important policy issue for, for the community, even though it's not a big budget area.
Because we're not, I'm not an accountant by any means. And let's just say I want to look at these enhancements. And let's just say we go forward with the Admin Human Resource Generalist. Chief Smith requests another police officer. Concern I have with that, even though I think we need police officers, that'd be two years in a row we've added police officers and nothing to the Fire Department, and yet calls for services continue to go up at the Fire Department. Ambulance calls, so it's all. And our firemen are across trains, so they're paramedics and firefighters. So I'm almost feeling that, with the growth of the city, especially in the southwest side and some of the other things, apartments being added, that I would, myself comfortably, I'd like to approve all three positions. But that being said, where do we make maybe some cuts or adjustments? I wouldn't even know where to begin.
Well, the cuts would, I mean.
You know, I mean, we can't, we can't, you, you had said earlier, we can't say, you can't take something like from the CIP and say, no, we're going to move it over to operation. Can't do that. So where within the operations could we, you know, somehow cover those types of expenses, you know? Plus, the chief, you know, the chief also wants this software package, I, I think is beneficial. Again, it enhances our Police Department, enhances our services to our citizens, things like that, but that's another cost. So I guess.
Well, we do have the sixty-one thousand.
We have the sixty-one thousand.
Right. That, I mean, but that doesn't even fund the position.
Would that, would that give us a firefighter, the sixty-one?
No, I, I would think the firefighter and police are pretty much close to the same, right?
You're talking about eighty to a hundred thousand.
Yeah, this is eighty-six with benefits. You'd probably be right in that ballpark with a firefighter.
I understand the chief write about the school liaison officers, that he is, they would be dropped, or they, are they in the budget?
The council asked us.
They're in the budget.
To give suggestions, if we needed to make cuts, what would they be? So every department provided something in that regard. These are, these, these items are not cut, they are in the budget, they're, they're offered up here. So if you wanted to make cuts.
Here's where you have to choose from.
Here's your menu of cuts. But if you would ask the, you know, Police Department, would you make these cuts for that? My, I would submit to you that if they wanted to do that, they would have come in and just suggested that they do that. These are not cuts that they want in place of, in addition in their department, because if you reduce an officer and you add an officer.
I think we need those officers in the schools.
I do, too, and I think that, that's.
More so now than ever.
I think taking officers out of the school would be a real detriment. But, you know, all of these cuts that you proposed cuts that you gave us, really are service impacts, in my opinion. If you really look at them, and again, where do you cut in services? You know, sometimes you can say, you know, we're, we're, we're top-heavy here, or we're heavy here. Really, these, these would have impacts immediately onto our service side of what we provide to our citizens. I mean.
But with the Public Works, for example, the reducing fuel or sodium chloride, they're like conservative estimates of what they need. That's also a gamble, right?
Sure.
We could end up having like some freak winter, and then be.
Two thousand eight.
Right.
I got here, and it was like, our budgets were already busted in the winter, I didn't, it was still summer. I mean, I guess.
Our salt budget was. I guess if there's one, one budget item that maybe I could, would, would be the number nine, the unclassified, reduce or eliminate the budget for outside council. Now granted, we've had some issues over the years when we've had to have outside council, but, I mean, it really doesn't have a huge impact, but it would have some impact on the levy, because it's thirty-seven, that would bring the levy down a little bit. But I just, you know, when you look at all the other ones, I, I don't support taking street, taking more streetlights.
Nope.
We've already, so we got issues. You know, contract services under community development.
Probably.
We could look there. I do think that sometimes we could do a little more in-house, maybe spend a little less money on consultants in that area, you know? Landscaping supplies, I don't see that as a real, you know.
Most of these are service reductions.
Right.
If you want to have a real cut, because.
Right.
You could, you say just, well, let's take our chances with fuel and sodium chloride, but that'll come back one day, and then you'll be.
Unless you do, unless you don't do it for that full amount. I mean, what I, what I kind of hear Councilmember Herman saying is, we could do kind of a hybrid of partial combinations from some of these.
Right.
Without totally reducing those services.
Correct. These are not, these are, these are, that type of thing is not an all or nothing. When you're talking about a, a reduction, you're just taking a chance on those things. I know council.
And we've done that a few times, even on the, on the, one year, I think we moved some money from Bike Pet to something else, and we moved, you know, I mean, that can happen, but still, when I'm thinking of adding three full-time positions to our table organization, that's probably a lifetime commitment to, to that situation, because you're going to have that position now in table organization.
Taxes still have an impact differently on people.
That was yesterday, we did.
I missed it in the morning.
No, we did it at the end of the, before lunch. End of the day, we did it, we had a little time.
The day. But I, I guess, so I'm thinking, as not being the accounting professional, not wanting to put more on your plate, Trina, I guess if there's a consensus in council that we'd like to add these positions, where would we find the money? Because last year, we got caught kind of a little bit in the afterthought that when we approved those three positions for the Police Department, all of a sudden.
In haste, yeah.
Where, where the money going to come from now?
Well, and let's.
I don't want to do that this year.
Kind of stop right now. We don't eat, we can't do the three enhancements and still stay within expenditure restraint.
That's the other issue, we got to, we're, how much room do we have in expenditure restraint?
So we have about $170,000.
Now, with that said, that's a hundred, a hundred, we could increase by 170.
Yep.
So we could increase by 170. For every dollar you want to go over 170, you've got to cut something. Now, does that 170 include the ICI?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got 170 that we could add in overall expenditures without hitting the expenditure, or before we hit this expenditure restraint wall. So that's really the.
That's.
The net, not even the net, that's the, that's the gross expenditure you can go up.
I would look at the one position in police and one in fire and skip human resources. It has nothing to do with public safety.
Let's just say everything costs, you said 170?
170, yep.
170. Let's just say everything costs 200,000. What you could do is to get to that 200,000 is, you got 170 in room before you hit the cap, so you're okay there. You'd have to cut 30. So, you know, 20 from fuel and 10 from consultants.
Right.
I mean, there, there are, there is no all or nothing thing here, I don't think, for any of those, except when you're starting to talk a position, it's all or nothing, but the ones.
Is it, though? Because we have, in the past, we have ramped up by starting with a part-time, and then, you know, the addition of that full-time.
You can, but the impact of.
But you can't, you can't add a part-time police or a part-time.
No, no, I, I guess I'm referring to the HR.
I think you're talking to HR, but.
The HR.
But even there, though, that, you know, we had a request last year, which we didn't follow, do with a diversity coordinator. This position appears to be looking at some of those issues. So again, that's, that's an enhancement. I agree, it's not public safety, but it's an enhancement to.
Our economic development.
Our whole overall wellness and growth in the city of Oshkosh as we move forward in the future, whether it's more diversity, more labor force, more whatever, that we want to get a more diversified workforce. We've talked about that for years, that it would, you know, if there's enhancements to having that diversified workforce.
What I'm hearing is, put them all on, put them all in here, because you're not, the purpose of, this, this is a great discussion. The purpose isn't to make the decisions, but the purpose is to get everything out on the table.
Yeah, how we, how can we fit some of this into our budget without impacting too much of our service delivery to our citizens at the same time? But I think the need is there in police and fire, for sure, because as the chief was saying, Fire Chief was saying this morning, he anticipates or feels that this city will need another ambulance, ambulance out into the service unit in the next five to six years. I don't think we can hit in our budget, six officers, one dying, six firefighters. So how do you get there in the next five, that's a, kind of that long-range planning, you know, to think about, you know, because that's, that's important. Public service, public safety, and streets and sidewalks, to me, are the most important thing that we do for citizens in our community.
Well, Trina, it doesn't take, I mean, it takes some time to plug those numbers in, but you're not.
The one thing I could suggest to the council is, what if on week one, your sheet you receive Monday, excuse me, Friday, it had. you receive Monday, it, excuse me, Friday, it has one police and one fire and then we will propose the offset. Mark and I will work through the offset.
My suggestion on Fire, with all due respect to Chief Franz, in a year, you're going to have a new chief. I don't think the result will be any different, to be honest with you. I think any responsible chief is probably going to tell you exactly what Tim told you today.
But we haven't added, I mean, we haven't added to the Fire Department since two thousand and three. That's fourteen years we've gone with the same amount of staff and yet...
Well, let, Trina do her work rather than abating it, let her do the numbers.
Chief didn't put that in for reason. And the chief didn't put it in for a reason because that's for the next chief to deal with.
But couldn't you say in five years from now, they're going to even need more than they need right now, adding one?
Well, I think, I think, I think you're moving towards, you're moving towards a functional decision to expand service and that's got to be a plan, not just adding a body. It's got to be a, a plan.
Yeah, he said even adding one ambulance, we need to add multiple that one.
To be honest, you, you also heard him, if you were going to add a position...
He wouldn't ask for it.
I, I'd say add a battalion chief. They are so shorthanded on covering and supervising shifts and...
He didn't ask for it though either.
He didn't ask for any of them. He didn't ask for a fire, a fire officer either, if you were going to do it.
But you would be on the bottom side, you'd, you'd end up promoting somebody from within to that battalion chief.
And you'd bring somebody...
You wouldn't be hiring, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be hiring outside to hire battalion chief. So you'd still hire that entry-level firefighter to allow him to bump someone up to battalion chief. I mean, you would have a, you'd have an increase in salary, but you would still have that opportunity.
Well, let's not try to run the Fire Department. Do the numbers and then we can make a decision.
Can you also give us what it looks like for the HR position too? Yep. Give you two perspectives, one with...
Oh yeah, we can ask him about that. Yeah, that, I think that...
Because we've got the sheet. So do you want one police officer with one battalion chief? Or do you want one policeman and one fireman and then alternate all three positions? Yes.
Yes.
And you would, do you want it fully funded with utilization of cuts? Or...
Why don't we, let's not, well, let's not go there.
Just put everything on the sheet.
We have some responsibilities as well to go home and look at this and, and what we want to see as well. So we have a little bit of work to do.
Right, yeah, we can give you our...
We can offer up options because the first thing, the limitation is we can't exceed expenditure restraint.
No, we can't.
Right.
So that's just that. And I guess the other direction I'd like from council is where are you comfort-wise in terms of the levy? Because the levy drives this too. The levy's at three point nine. There was a somewhat conscious effort to keep it, you know, it's three point nine for a reason. But that's still, everybody has a different comfort zone. Somebody might say three point nine rounds up to four for me. I mean, every, so that you're going to have to think about too and, and I guess I'd, I'd leave it out there.
I was surprisingly comfortable with three point nine right now, right now.
The impact on homeowners will be different too because of the, the assessment at homes. It's going to be different for a lot of people. A lot of people are going to go down. A lot of people are going to go up.
What was the average, about three percent increase?
No, the average is, is almost zero.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, even amongst department heads, they're like, mine's going up, mine's going down. And amongst the council, yours are going up, some are going up, some are going down and some are kind of staying still. That you're going to see a lot and, you know, people aren't probably paying much attention to it. They're hearing three point nine percent. Well, it might be three point nine percent for some, but for others, it's going to be ten and others is going to be a reduction. As weird as that sounds, that's, that's the reality.
I was going through an old desk for a couple past weekends ago and I came across a tax bill from the nineties. I was paying more then than I'm paying now. Same house, same everything.
Well, what I'm, so I'm not hearing much in terms of the, the tax, so we're going to kind of hold that, keep that in a holding pattern in terms of presenting options for you, give you some expenditure options and basically let you know what you're getting into. If you, if you were to do everything you just talked about, what that would mean for you, now that would take you over. It, it just would take you over. At least they don't get you thinking about that.
I just had one more question. Like Chief Franz said that a lot of the guys are going to be retiring in the next, twenty-five guys in the next five years or that's what they're...
Five a year is not, is not, is reasonable.
I mean, those wage reductions are probably going to be at least twenty percent, won't they be? That would cover one person and five people retiring would be one added.
At the very bottom, yeah. They move up fairly quickly. We did a few years ago, we negotiated a lower starting point. We didn't change the upper point, but we started, it was a lower start, but...
Takes three years to get to top pay, right?
Yeah, and it was, it was a year and a half before. So it stretched it out a little bit. I mean, it gave us benefit, that was good. But in three years, they're back up to the top again. It, it doesn't take that long. And virtually because of the wage compression we have, when we replace one VC with another VC, they're almost identical. So really, the only real savings you get are, is way at the, at the bottom, but that's where you start. Everybody, you know, whatever vacancy happens in the Fire Department, there's a vacancy at firefighter, you know, because everybody bumps up and that's where the real savings are.
How many city employees are there, non-fire, police?
Well, there's five hundred fifty full-time employees, give or take. There's one hundred in Fire, one hundred twenty-five in Police. Those aren't all sufficient. Rough idea of how many people we have there. So that's a good, you know, forty percent of our workforce.
You have the direction you need, Trina?
I think we're good. I think what, what, you'll get the, you get the whole menu this Friday. You'll know exactly what it is and then you can start looking at that cut sheet and, and we'll start looking at it too in terms of, you know, getting you to, because there's advantage to going to the max on...
Can you send that electronically too? Because I'm going to be able to tell them, but I'll have computer access.
Yeah, we can do that.